Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. As you can see, we're missing a few council members at the moment. So I am gonna get the party started. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that at this regular meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session if necessary. Can I get roll call?
Mayor Daggett. Vice Mayor Asland. Vice Mayor Asland. I will note that he is online. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here, online.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
City Clerk, I'm here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we are at the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will do the honors, so please stand if you are able. Councilmember House, can you please do the mission statement?
Yes, thank you. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember Matthews, can you do our land acknowledgement?
It would be my pleasure. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. We are now down to public participation. Public participation enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, fill out a card and please hand it to the city clerk. And it looks like I do have a couple of speaker requests. The first one is Regina Solis.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Sweet, Councilmember House, Vice Mayor Asland online, Councilmembers McCarthy and Councilmember Matthews online. I appear before you today as the Vice President of Flagstaff Sister Cities, which was founded in 2020 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with the mission to build international friendship and goodwill, one person, one city, at a time. This was a longstanding program of the City of Flagstaff that dates back to the 1970s. We accomplished this mission through youth, cultural, educational, and economic exchanges and networking. With much gratitude to Mayor Becky Daggett, who signed a sister city agreement on behalf of the City of Flagstaff with Jorge Alberto Eljes Reter, the alcalde, or the mayor of the municipality of Navajoa, Sonora, Mexico, last September 28 in Scottsdale. This was a result of collaborative work with Flagstaff Sister Cities with Consul General of Mexico and Phoenix Jorge Mendoza Yescas. This auspicious ceremony formalized nine sister cities agreements between municipalities in Arizona and Sonora, forging commitment to collaborate through the diverse cultural, social, and economic similarities that bind us. Now I reiterate my invitation to council four weeks ago that on November 10 and 11, Flagstaff Sister Cities is hosting the annual Arizona Sister Conference with several Arizona sister cities relationship gathering in Flagstaff, promoting peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation. One individual, one community, one city at a time. Dignitaries and community partners will be in attendance. We again extend this invitation to each and every one of you, mayor, vice mayor, and council. We hope to see you there. With this invitation comes the reverberation of our request to the mayor and council to underwrite the event, to fund, to shoulder cover, to cover overhead costs. With much gratitude and for your continued support in breathing life to the program of Flagstaff Sister Cities, which was an original program of the City of Flagstaff. Thank you so much. I end with a quote from Molly Blank. Everything we strive to do in life is a gift. It's our responsibility to share it, to give back to the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto our next speaker request. And I cannot read the last name, but I believe it's Jonathan. So if you turned down the card, you are up. And can you state your first and last name?
My name is Jonathan Dionisio.
Thank you.
Okay, so how's everybody doing today? I just wanted to come make a comment because what I'm about to say, I'm also writing a letter to the governor and the attorney general about this. And I'm still learning all of the rules as far as what the city can do about these, but I still wanted to come make the comment anyway. But I think with the nonprofit organizations, I think there's a lack of planning as far as what they're gonna do when they actually solve the problem. You know, like, for example, let's just use the shelters as an example, right? Their goal is to solve the issue of homelessness, right? But the problem is, they don't plan ahead on, okay, if the issue is, when the issue is solved, what are we gonna do with the shelter? Are we gonna turn it into a school? Are we gonna turn it into, you know, I don't know? Are they gonna tackle another issue? You know, these people that run nonprofit organizations, they're problem solvers. And they want to solve problems. And the thing is, when you don't have that future planning of what it's gonna evolve into, what you have is, the people sometimes, they don't push, they don't have the incentive to push towards their goal of solving that problem. Even if you might say, oh, it's a problem that's never gonna be solved, but still set the goal, right? Because then you're incentivizing innovation and you're incentivizing creative changes and things of that nature, right? And when you don't have it, what you see is that they, some people, and even just outside the shelters, they get stuck in the ways and stuck in just kinda meeting the demand of the problem and not really trying to do more and more and more. You know, so I wanted to just kinda say that because what you have is kind of like a repetitive cycle of over and over and over again, same thing, you know? The definition of insanity, I think it's like doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. That's literally the definition. I learned that recently. And I'm not calling anybody insane, but I'm just saying that, you know, there's some insanity in the process. So I wanted to just say about that, I think it would be a good thing if nonprofit organizations that have to tackle specific goals like that, anything of that kind of nature, they should have to write, okay, what are we gonna do with this? With the money and the employees and everybody? And what are we gonna turn it into so that they can push towards their goal? Because, as you know, these people, they can feed their families with that money as well. They can pay themselves a salary, so that's it.
Thank you. And it looks like we have an online participant?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I have Sabrina. Sabrina, you may go ahead and address mayor and council. Sabrina, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address mayor and council.
So it looks like Sabrina cannot reach us. If you are online and can hear me, please email council your comment or you can try again at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Moving down to item five, council liaison reports. And I will start with online, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have Councilmember Harris online?
No, we do not.
Okay, and is Vice Mayor online?
Vice Mayor is online.
Hey, Vice Mayor, do you have a council liaison report? Doesn't appear so. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you. I don't have anything tonight, but thank you for asking.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I did my BPAC meeting and it was another great meeting, all things art in our city. The one thing that I found fascinating, which I didn't even realize, the regional plan has a cover. And we're looking for an artist to do the cover for the 2045 regional plan. So we are calling out that for artists to apply. More information on that coming your way. I have the Water Commission on Thursday, 4 o'clock in council chambers. And Friday, I will be traveling to Prescott for the Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association meeting. And Councilmember House.
Thank you. I'll just share that as the council liaison to the Flagstaff Sister Cities Board, I wanted to reiterate the thanks to the mayor for the recent signing of the recommitment to our sister city, Navajoa. I also see that the mayor has signed up for the upcoming Sister Cities Conference coming up in November here in Flagstaff. And I look forward to seeing her and others there. And just to reiterate the request to council to support the request for our support of that event with funding and attendance and continued sisterhood with our sister cities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, our appointment. Let's see. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that the City Council may vote to go into executive session. And we are looking for appointments to the Library Board for number one. And I believe Councilmember House, you are up.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, thank you to the various people that applied for the appointment to the Library Board. And I am going to move to reappoint Lisa Gany to a term expiring November 2026. She has been serving a partial term and expressed her desire to continue that service into a full term. And I 100% support her in that, so that is my motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will second that. Jim McCarthy.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any comment on this? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Councilmember, actually, let me step back. We have a second appointment to the Library Board. And that would be Mayor Daggett that has that appointment.
Correct, Councilmember Sweet. And with her not being present at the time, we will go ahead and just move that appointment to the next regular council meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Now we are on to an appointment for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Councilmember House, you're up.
Thank you. This was a particularly challenging one, and I just want to acknowledge that because there were a number of folks that applied and spoke to various levels of background with Parks and Recreation, interest in this commission, and just a desire to get involved with the city. So for those that are not appointed, I just wanted to reiterate thanks for their applications and encourage them to continue seeking those appointments with this or other commissions. There is always space open somewhere, even if not here. So with that, I move to appoint Sandy Heath to a term expiring August 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I want to call for all those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are on to item 6C. It's a consideration to the Housing Commission. And it looks like Councilmember Matthews, you are up.
Thank you so much. So there was a lot of wonderful applicants. It's really refreshing to see so many residents and citizens being interested in housing since that's one of our declared crises. So what I did in really narrowing down the applicants was I have a spreadsheet, how many people were in real estate, lending, and specialists in either nonprofit, low-income housing, or just housing assistance, and then our general community. And I felt like that category was the one that needed more representation to balance the voices out there. So in doing that, I actually then drilled down to see background, their statements on, we had a few that had multiple properties, so they had that experience. But I really felt like a good diversification and perspective brought me to the candidate that I'm going to nominate, and that's Kevin Dobie. He has experience both in EMT experience, so he's out there. He's worked with people that have been unsheltered in his past. But he's also a homeowner, but doesn't have multiple real estate investments. So I felt like he would bring that perspective to just our regular residents who are just trying to find housing and battling the homeownership challenges. So I nominate Kevin Dobie to that position.
Thank you, Councilmember.
To expire September 26.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. McCarthy.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We are down to the liquor license public hearings, number seven. And our Vice Mayor arrived, and I'm going to hand this over to him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember and former Vice Mayor Miranda Sweet. Doing a wonderful job. I too am not prepared to be in this role this afternoon, but will march forward as we can. Agenda item seven, liquor license, public hearings. Staff recommended action is that we hold the public hearing. So I'm opening the public hearing now. And do we have any presentation or information from our officers?
I do. I have a presentation. I know that Mr. Solomon have something to say?
Thank you. I appreciate that, Vice Mayor, if I may.
Absolutely.
Thank you for opening the public hearing. I just wanted to note that it could be for both items 7A and B together. And the motion to forward to the state, the application with a recommendation for approval can be made for both A and B at the same time after the public hearing is closed as well. Thank you.
So I'm Lieutenant Sap with the Flagstaff Police Department. I have two new applications. They're both for Oregano's Pizza Bistro. One is for the west side and one is for the east side. The west side is located at 1061 South Plaza Way, Suite C. The east side is 980 South Country Club Drive. On my investigation of those applicants, I did not find any derogatory records. There were no historical or current liquor violations on them. In my understanding, there's somebody present for the business that may answer any questions you might have.
Happy to hear from the applicant, but we can also move forward without a statement. If you'd like to speak, come on and let us know anything you have to say.
Thank you very much. We are just applying for the new licenses. We have a private transfer of ownership from one entity to the other, hence the need for new license, so no change. We've been in Flagstaff for two decades and happy to be here.
And we're happy to have you. Thank you for coming out today. You know, I think it was Councilmember Odegaard who is fond of saying, thanking applicants for showing up. We often don't require any conversation, which is a good thing. But he was fond of recognizing the fact that you took the time to come out, be here just in case, and I really do appreciate it. I think we're ready for a motion.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I will... Councilmember House? If we could ask for public comment, and then if there was none, we can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on any of our liquor licenses?
We do not, Vice Mayor.
Then I will close the public hearing. And I think I can accept a motion for both A and B.
That is correct.
Vice Mayor, I will move to forward both applications to the state with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And now we will move on to our consent agenda. All right, so we're gonna pull 8G for public comment. And we're able to pull any other items as folks need as well. Just let me know.
Vice Mayor, it looks as if Councilmember Matthews may have a question.
Thank you, City Clerk. Councilmember Matthews, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like to pull out for further conversation. I'm just pulling it up now, because I have the old version, is C and F.
Wonderful, thank you. So we're going to pull C, F, and G. And I'd like to entertain a motion for consent on the remaining items.
Vice Mayor, I will move to approve the consent agenda as posted with the removal of, I think it was B, F, and G.
C, F, and G.
C, F, and G. Thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? I'll give you a few more seconds here and now, Councilmember McCarthy, to weigh in. There is a delay. Okay, so those pass.
I did have a question, Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
Is item E, as in Echo, was that, that one has been pulled already, right?
Correct.
Or did they get, or did they get renumbered?
Councilmember McCarthy, that 8E was actually removed from the agenda.
And then, so do we have all the way up to G, as in golf, still there? Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah. So I just, we just skipped over that. We didn't renumber them. Okay, I yield. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna consider individually consent item number C. Consideration and approval of contract. It's a cooperative purchase contract with Courtesy Chevrolet for the purchase of five fully-electric 2024 Chevrolet 1500 Silverado Crew Cab pickup trucks in the amount of $428,098.17. Lori, go ahead. Councilmember Matthews, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I just, I had some questions I wanted to ask. You know, I did some research, and the electric vehicles, I know, is in our plans as we age out our fleet on the city that we replace with electric vehicles. And just the other day, we had, came before us, approval of gas-powered vehicles because of the lack of availability. So I looked at the Chevy 1500 Silverados, and two things jumped out at me. And so one of them is just a comment. The electric vehicles, based on the contract, will cost the city $85,619. And a gas vehicle looks like about $47,995. So we're paying an extra $38,000 nearly for the EV. My bigger concern was the, oh, I think that's on the F-150, was the availability. I know we're just ordering them, but can we put in the approval that if there is a certain lag time that the city manager can go ahead and approve gas vehicles if it looks like we're longer than nine months or a year to wait?
City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I will also invite, we have folks here who represent our fleet team, and they can fill in. We do have a fleet policy which sets forth procedures to follow that in the case of unavailability or price that we simply cannot afford from a budgetary standpoint or other significant concerns, we are able to kind of move through the pecking order of the vehicle in terms of, you know, EV to hybrid to regular gas engine vehicles. But Evan, could I invite you to come on up and either correct what I just said or fill in some blanks? Thanks.
Good afternoon. Evan Tyrrell, Sol Waste and Fleet Services Section Director. So a couple items here. There have been, of course, very significant supply chain issues with EVs. We had a lot of Ford Lightnings on order in the past six-plus months, even for 12 months in the past. Those contracts had to be canceled due to those electric vehicles not being brought into production. But also, secondly, because the cost had increased dramatically upwards of, I think one of them was $105,000 total for that particular vehicle. I was just doing some research just before coming up here, just right now. Kelley Blue Book indicates that the savings of an EV versus a ICE internal combustion engine vehicle is about $5,000 in fuel savings per year. That's based on a 15,000 miles driven on an annual basis. So over a 10-year projected lifetime of the vehicle, we're looking at a savings of about $5,000 and then becoming $50,000 for that 10-year timeframe. I guess the other item to consider is the maintenance. We don't know, there's not a lot of long-term information available for these vehicles quite yet, but it is showing that the maintenance costs are typically less, if not half of the normal cost of these vehicles. That depends on if the batteries fail. There's a lot of unknown factors. Of course, Flagstaff being high altitude and having the cold winter seasons, that can also limit the range. These particular Silverados have a mileage guarantee of 350 to 400 miles per charge. So the distance in these is becoming much larger than some of the other vehicles that have been at market thus far. But I think City Manager Clifton's comments are correct, and I don't have any corrections to make, but I'm happy to take other questions. And I have Nate Nowalborski, he's our fleet manager here. And I think sustainability is here as well to talk about anything with EVs as well.
Well, I have a follow-up question, Vice Mayor. Do you mind?
Go for it.
So I didn't have a chance to research the comparison on the Silverados I did on the Ford F-150s, and I'll come to that when that item comes up. But have you researched the payload capacity? And are we gonna use these trucks in a scenario where that payload capacity for an EV versus a combust, a gas engine is going to come into play? Because I found on the Ford F-150, the payload is quite significantly different.
I'm gonna have to defer that question to the fleet manager Nate Nowalborski, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Nate, do you have some good intel on that, hopefully?
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So the role that these are gonna serve are not necessarily... are not necessarily going to be towing capacity. The departments that are involved in these purchases, Park Flag, Facilities, Solid Waste, and Streets, are looking for payload capacity, something similar to just a pickup truck, half-ton or under. The payload capacity on the Chevy Silverado, I don't have the spec directly in front of me on this. They are very similar to a half-ton truck. That will reduce the range on these units. So, being the lesser of the two models at 350 estimated miles on a full charge, it's hard to say what you're realistically gonna see. These are, these are new trucks. There's, there's no hard numbers to give you on that. If you included winter temperatures affecting that payload of 1,500 pounds in here, you'd realistically expect to see over 200 miles on a full charge, which is fantastic for an EV truck. The use by these departments is exactly what they've been waiting for in these units. These are going to be work trucks. They're going to see mostly in-town use. They're gonna be hauling tools and materials of a moderate amount, not a heavy payload. And I think they're gonna be a great fit. And I don't know if that answered your question directly, but hopefully.
It did. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go ahead and call the question for consent item C, and then we'll take F separately.
Vice Mayor, I move to approve the contract, cooperative purchase contract with Courtesy Chevrolet for the purchase of five fully-electric 2024 Chevrolet 1500 Silverado Crew Cab pickups in the amount of $428,098.17, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
And I will second that motion. Thank you very much, just as a minor matter of discussion. I do appreciate us pulling these out and having these conversations with these electric vehicles. I think it's important for us to continue to be transparent and engage the public about our decision-making process on these items, which are constantly evolving, and as a part of a priority that sort of comes with a premium. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? That motion carries. And now we can move on to F. Was there any further discussion or questions that you wanted to lift up? Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Only clarification on the use of this truck, because I did find the payload on an EV to be 1,682 pounds versus a gas-powered F-150 to be 3,280 pounds. I just wanted to clarify that we were not gonna use these trucks for much hauling or towing.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Amy Hagan, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. This specific vehicle for the park section will be for our brand-new position, the park ranger, who will not be towing with this vehicle. There'll be a chance to possibly haul around trash bags, because they'll be working daily with our trash team, and maybe limbs if they encounter those throughout their day. But the, this was ideal procurement for this vehicle, for this position within our section, because our trash team historically drives around 78 miles per day in a truck. So, this will be an ideal procurement for this.
Thank you so much. With that, Vice Mayor, if no one else has any questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Be my guest.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve and ratify the cooperative purchase contract with Don Sanderson Ford, Inc., in the amount of $80,137.68 for the Ford F-150 Lightning EV truck, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
We have a first and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we're on to item G. Consideration and approval of contract for cooperative purchase contract with Pride Outfitters LLC to uplift outfit emergency equipment on four patrol vehicles in an amount not to exceed $88,000. We do have public comment for this item. I'll go ahead and take that now from Kelly Cullen.
Hi, I'm Kelly Cullen, Niles Radio, right from right here in Flagstaff, 1602 Northeast Street. Regarding consent item 8G, the upfitting of city vehicles. First of all, thanks for letting us bid on this project. Since we only get this chance about once every 10 years, I wanted to come here today and express my concerns regarding this bid opportunity. The informational package for this item states the local contractor, I think they're referring to me as, referring to me, Niles Radio, it says that we're the high bid. However, if you review, if you actually review the quotes, it's obvious that we are not bidding on the same line items. Perhaps some of the line items originally requested were changed. I don't know why. It does not make sense that we're all not bidding on the same line items. I don't even know how this, this happens. I just want to point out that the direct comparison between the selected quote and Niles' quote is definitely not apples-to-apples. It can't be comparable. It's different line items. So, also, the informational package does not provide any cost consideration for the wasted resources in shuffling vehicles 330 miles back and forth to Chandler for installation and the ongoing service for the life of the vehicles. This is, this has the conflict with the city of Flag's climate action plan. It definitely has an associated cost that's not included in the informational write-up. I want to see that. So, another item is that, that needs to be accounted for is the local Flagstaff wage and sales tax. You're picking a company out of Chandler, their wage starts at $12. Our wage starts at nearly 17. Here shortly, it'll be 17-plus. These required city rates should not be held against a local company that's just trying to provide a service here in Flag. There should be a measured factor of allowance for labor. I'm here today to request this item to be tabled until, one, the revised equipment list and specifications that are available to all bidders, two, the cost of shuffling vehicles back and forth to Chandler is calculated into the purchase, and three, the higher wages and sales tax are considered. Please, if any of your staff has comments to this, please give me a chance to response, for a response. Thank you.
Mr. Cullen, thank you so much for coming forward and expressing those concerns. I do remember you coming forward recently with other concerns as well in the near past. Before we get into a conversation or questions from council, I was wondering, Patrick, if you have any response, any comments, or any helpful insights that we could have concerning what we just heard?
Good afternoon, Honorable Vice Mayor, Council. Patrick Brown, your purchasing director. So, I reviewed the cooperative this morning, when I understood that Niles was coming up. It was difficult to really compare the line items. We did not get a detailed line item from Niles, but we did from the other ones. Regardless, the factor, the travel factor was not considered in each of the vehicles. I'm not sure what the travel time would be, but I believe there would, the difference, or the difference in pricing is somewhere around $13,000 in price quotes. We can go back, take a look, take out the TPT, try to figure in some mileage. But as far as altering the quotes, what's in there does represent what our police department is looking for. So, our police department reached out for uplift service for their vehicles, and they received quotes back, and they determined that this vendor meets all the criteria that they're looking for, but it was a lower price, so that we, we moved forward with that one.
Do you, do you know if that price, if, if the competitive nature of that was integrally wrapped up in differences in minimum wage?
I do not know. And if I were a guessing person, I would say it was not in consideration. That's something we can look into as well. If it's decided to be tabled, or if it passes, we can still look into those items.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Put me on the spot there. I know how it feels.
It's okay.
So, I do think a couple interesting things were brought up there, one of them being, how can we have competitive local bids with our minimum wage being so much higher than non-local bidders? I don't know that that's a question we're gonna answer tonight, but it's certainly, it's, it's certainly a new part of the conversation. I think we should really think about moving forward and maybe discuss here publicly at some point. I do have a question for, I'm guessing, our police department. There's been a recommendation from the public that we tabled this item. I want to know what the cost of any delays could be, or if we need to consider this under any type of urgency or priority. Anybody? Come on down.
Kristen Decker, Special Services Supervisor at the Flagstaff Police Department. One of my purviews is fleet, and working with getting vehicles and the outfit of them. I'd like to point out, too, that one of the reasons why we're hoping to get approval to move forward with Pride is the fact that they are under a state contract and have already gone through a competitive bid process. Currently, as you may have understood from a previous meeting when we were going for the gasoline models versus the hybrid models, because we couldn't get the hybrid models, we expressed that our fleet is currently at 41 vehicles versus 50. We were able to get the gas vehicles to help bridge that gap. However, now we're in the process of needing to outfit them with sirens, lights, all the emergency equipment in order to put them on the road. We, we are already in a critical situation as far as not having enough patrol vehicles on the road. We are hoping to get this done as quickly as possible.
With the anticipation that Pride can start work in November, and hopefully have completed by the end of the year, so we can have those vehicles on the road, and supplementing for the vehicles that are out.
So, am I correct that I'm hearing you say that a delay could be problematic or is certainly not ideal?
Not ideal.
Okay. Well, something, something to keep in mind as we continue this conversation. Does anybody have any other comments or questions?
Mayor, this is Sterling, just raised, or Vice Mayor, sorry, just raised my hand. I just wanted to note that the language terminology being used was a requested motion to table. Under the rules of procedure, that would have to come back at the next meeting. If it was a motion to do something further out than that, it would be a motion to postpone. So, just making sure that is considered by any of the council members in a motion. Specific, the specific nature of a motion to table is to come back at the next meeting under the rules of procedure.
Thank you for adding that insight into the discussion. I, I see your hand up. Councilmember Harris?
So, I, I just want some clarification. So, it takes about 10 weeks to equip the vehicles with everything that they need, because you said it would be done. If they start in November, it would be done by the end of the year. So, I'm thinking November, December, so probably about 10 weeks?
That's based on their ability to fit us into their schedule, which, when we started this process, they, they felt like they could get us in, in November, with the anticipation that the four vehicles we're requesting would be completed by end of November.
And then just another follow-up. So, what would be our options if we put this on hold? What else do we have? Do we have any other vehicles or anything else that could fill in for the time being?
Without having an outfitter and a contract in place to install the hardware, we do not.
Okay. So, we don't have any other vehicles that could just kind of jump in there and take us through for a while?
No.
Okay. So, so in your professional opinion, would you say that we're in an emergency situation at this point in time?
We're getting there.
We're getting there. So, getting there meaning?
Yeah. If, if we can't get this contract in place, and we can't get them in for scheduling with this outfitter, I don't anticipate us being able to outfit the current vehicles we have in our fleet before the end of the year, which means we have nine vehicles, these four plus the others that we have in our fleet, sitting, not being used by patrol, which is what they were purchased.
And so, how many officers does that affect? So, so we're doubling up now, is that correct?
At times, we have six squad, eight squads.
Correct.
Eight squads. We have a day shift, a overlap shift, a swing shift, and a grave shift. We run about 25-plus vehicles a day? No, 40 a day.
Yes.
We run the full 40 a day. So, if one of those vehicles goes out, we do not have a pool vehicle to pool for those people, and then that's when we end up doubling up on officers.
So, we have nothing, we don't have any reserves sitting somewhere in a garage or something?
No, nothing that's marked and has the emergency equipment that is necessary for the officers to do their job.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, you know, I definitely understand the urgency, but I also feel strongly that this vote and this decision is based on equality of the bidding process. And I don't know if the installers are typically minimum wage. That may or may not come into play, but I feel like it at least deserves a postponement to next week to get a clear answer on if the, the bids were equal in the line items that they considered, as well as the minimum wage issue, if in fact, the labor charge was based on minimum wage installers. Our local businesses have a hard enough time staying afloat up here in Flagstaff, and I want to make sure that we are keeping things as balanced as we can for them. So, I'd like to move that we postpone this vote for one week, so we can get those answers.
You mean tabled?
Tabled, yes.
Okay, so, we have a motion to table this. I, I just want to go over protocol a little bit. We can, for me personally, I'm ready to move forward on this. So, just for example, I might vote no on tabling, and then vote yes to move forward, just because I know this has been a sticky situation in the past. I do see city manager's hand going up, and so I want to give you a chance to talk. But just remember, there are options for how to navigate a yes or no on getting through this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm so sorry to-
I'm sorry, city manager to interrupt, but when there's a motion on the table, we really should see if there's a second first before we have the discussion. Was there a call for a second? I'm sorry to interrupt.
You're perfectly well within your rights to do so. There was not a call for a second. Do we have a second for that motion? It does not sound like we do. So, that motion fails, and now I'd like to invite the city manager to provide any observations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm so sorry for the interruption. I do believe we have another speaker on this. I just wanted to put that out there before we come to closure on this. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't have that system set up on my computer right now. Is this an online comment?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Let's go ahead and take that now.
Mayor, Council, I have Sabrina. Sabrina, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council. Sabrina, it looks like we're having some technical issues. You may go ahead and email your comments to Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I think we're good to move on.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. Mr. Cullen, I do see your hand going up. I'm not familiar with the best protocol for having you come back up. I might defer to the mayor on deciding whether or not...
I ask if I can speak if there's people had additional comments, and that's generally allowable. I don't have anything negative to say. It's positive.
Well, let me ask our city attorney, is there any issue procedurally with having a public comment or come back up for a second comment?
Yes, actually, if there's a council member that has a question for him, based on a comment that he made previously, that's within the purview of the mayor to allow him to come back up and answer that question. Typically, that happens, but without a question, it is not typical that somebody can reserve time for rebuttal, if you will. As a member of the public, it's up to the chair of the meeting. As you're the chair, that's up to you, Vice Mayor, but typically that doesn't happen without a question from a council member first.
Thank you so much for that additional clarity. Mr. Cullen, why don't you come back up? I do want to, absolutely, I'd like to know how you're feeling about this at this point.
The last thing I want to do is have a public safety issue where they need these four cars right away. Now, it's my understanding there's 13 cars altogether, and if those people are going to have these cars knocked out by a quick date, then let's do it. But let's give me a chance on the other, the remaining ones. And one other comment I have to say is, they said their contractor, their contractors has a state contract. They have a Maricopa contract. I have a state contract statewide. I'm more than willing to share it with you. And the other comment about the minimum wage, how are we going to deal with that? It's elementary. I mean, I support, people need to make an affordable living here. Now, when it goes out of town, all you have to do is get a certified payroll. Does everyone in their building make the minimum wage? That's easy. The federal government does it all the time. So I'm willing to offer my state contract. I don't want to hold the police department up ever for, if they need four vehicles out there right away, yeah, let's do it. I'm not going to oppose that. And I think it was already done. It's going. But thank you for your time. I appreciate, it's not sour grapes here. I'm just trying to get my foot in the door and have a little local business. Thank you.
Mr. Cullen, you raised some important things for us to continue to wrestle with and grapple with. I do appreciate it. At this point, I think we should call the question.
Actually, Mayor, or Vice Mayor, sorry, is there a motion to approve that has been made?
I believe one's coming down the pike right there. Council Member House?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move to approve the cooperative purchase contract with Pride Outfitters LLC for the outfit, outfit, emergency equipment on four patrol vehicles in an amount not to exceed $88,000, and authorize the city manager to execute all the necessary documents.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Council Member Sweet seconds. Any further discussion? Council Member House?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to note that I also understand and appreciate the comments that were being brought forward tonight, and I think it is an important conversation. I think the job before us this evening is weighing the balance of the critical situation that our police and safety patrols are facing against this request for further information. And so I want to enable us to move forward on this important topic while also leaving room for that further discussion. I think we still have the ability to have those conversations and move that forward without postponing this. So, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent item G passes at this point. I'm very happy to hand things back over to you, Mayor, if you're able and willing.
Thank you, and by all accounts, it looks like you did an outstanding job. So thank you for a very on-the-fly tap on the shoulder to do this. I apologize. Nothing in my day went as I thought it would, and I was without transportation. So, let's move down to item number nine, routine items, consideration and approval of municipal service, accounts, miscellaneous accounts receivable, transportation privilege tax, insufficient funds, and library write-offs.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer. The item before you is part of our annual process to write off uncollectible accounts. And new this year is we are asking to write off several library accounts that have been deemed uncollectible at this time. For new municipal bills, municipal accounts receivables, old sales tax accounts, and insufficient fund checks, we do have a slight reduction in our write-offs over prior year by about $25,000 that we're requesting. The amount is $76,462.86, and the reduction is mainly due to a lower amount of old sales tax accounts that we're writing off this year. Our municipal bills are our largest billing services that we do through the revenue section with approximately $44 million in billings on an annual basis. This year, we saw just a slight increase of the write-offs, and the write-offs as a percentage of total bill is only .15%, which is very good experience, especially as these bills and these accounts relate to the COVID period where we weren't disconnecting accounts. We were really setting a lot of payment plans and working with our customers during that period. However, we still have a low amount of write-off, which is kudos to our team. The miscellaneous accounts write-offs are requested at .02%, and this is only three accounts that we're asking to write off this year, and it's about $10 million, and we bill through miscellaneous accounts receivable. The staff summary speaks to our work with our customers as well as our collection efforts. So that information's there for you, the level of work we do. But I would like to thank our amazing revenue team for their work to keep these numbers low and collect the most we can for revenues that are owed us. Our customer service team, under the direction of Jessica Kittleson, do a great job working with customers and creating payment plans when necessary for those customers to assure they continue service and pay their bills, as well as our meter services team that are out in the field, and they help us with disconnecting accounts that are not being paid, and that generally creates an opportunity to collect on our past due amounts. Our billing and collections team of Kim Burns, our billing specialist, who is also our acting billing and collections manager, Sabrina James, our billing specialist, and Jenny Lynn, our collection specialist, they all work really hard on active and close accounts for the city. So they're assuring that we are collecting the most revenues to our capacity from what we delivered in services to our community members. So definitely want to thank them for their efforts, and we were very fortunate to work and learn under our previous billing and collections services manager, and I'm going to get choked up a little bit, Sharon Gonzalez. She really taught us and trained us in the collection areas, and we really valued her. And it was unfortunate that our longtime coworker and friend passed away about a year ago today, this Saturday. So we surely miss Sharon and all she did for the city. I just had to get that out there. She was very valued. Okay. New this year is a request to write off some of our library accounts that we have on service at our library division. We are recommending a write-off of just over $1.1 million in library account balances this year. This is a large amount that we're asking for. However, this is the first time we've brought library accounts to your attention to continue, to consider, stop our collection efforts on those, and write those accounts off. These accounts are really deemed uncollectible at this point. There's a period from June 1987, so many years ago, all the way to August 2016, that represents 15,000 accounts that we've billed for non-return books or equipment, fines or fees that we had for the library customers. But we don't see that those collectible as they've been inactive for at least seven years with no payment activity and no collections on those accounts. So we are asking that you write off those accounts at this time. There is, this is a non-fiscal impact to the city, so we're not looking to reduce our library funds by a million dollars because these are off-balance-sheet transactions. We really track them through our library system, and we only record the revenues as we collect those revenues. By adjusting off older accounts, it will make the accounts, the number of accounts more manageable for our library team as well as our collection team as we work with them on future collections at the library. And we will start bringing these to you annually instead of waiting such a long period of time to bring 29 years' worth of accounts to write off. You know, thanks to Nick Ruhlman, Library Specialist, for bringing this to our attention in management services, and we had several meetings with them to talk about what we're looking to do, and we came to the same conclusion and recommendation of writing off these uncollectible accounts. And we do have our library team here if you do have any specific questions about those library accounts, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Council Member Harris?
I'm just curious. So I know library fines are probably a part of that. I thought I heard you mention something about equipment or...
Yeah, if we loaned equipment, like a laptop or something like that, and they did not get returned.
Oh, okay.
That's an example of what's in these write-offs, yeah.
Okay, and that's included in this $1 million?
Yes.
Over the last, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the write-off?
That's a lot of overdue books. I will move that we approve municipal services accounts, miscellaneous account receivable, transaction privilege tax, insufficient funds, and library write-offs, delinquency and uncollectible accounts for the fiscal year 2022-23.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to the regular agenda, 10A, consideration and approval of amendment to contract number 2019-03. Amend contract 2019-03 between the City of Flagstaff and Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona for the City of Flagstaff Community and Employer-Assisted Housing Programs to accommodate recommended changes to the program guidelines and provide an additional one-year term.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Thanks for having me here today. I'm Christine Pavlik, Housing and Grants Administrator for the housing...oh, how'd that happen? There. Are we good now? Okay. Housing and Grants Administrator for the Housing Section, and I'm here to talk to you today about our affordable homeownership programs and some recommended changes that we have. So first, I'm just going to give you a quick history of our homebuyer assistance programs, and then follow that up with an overview of the changes that are currently being recommended by staff, and then I'm hoping to answer any questions you might have, and ultimately hope to receive a motion to approve these changes as well as a contract renewal with the current program administrator. So currently, the City of Flagstaff contracts with Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona, they administer our homebuyer assistance programs. This contract began in November 2018 with a one-year term and an option to renew for four additional one-year terms, and that last renewal was issued last year in November 2022, and it'll expire next month. The city procurement team has stated that city council may amend the contract to include one more one-year term, and any of the other proposed changes will also require a contract amendment, will need to be approved by you, council, and would only apply to the remainder of this contract with HSNA, which at this time only includes general funds for homebuyer assistance programs, not bond funds. So currently, there is $280,000 remaining for our community homebuyer assistance loans and administration costs, and that's enough to do approximately six loans with the changes that we're discussing here tonight. So our homebuyer assistance programs currently have two facets. First, I'm going to talk to you about our employer-assisted housing program. We refer to it as EAH. So EAH was created back in 2015. At the time, it only served Flagstaff Police Department employees. It was expanded in the spring of 2018 to serve all eligible city employees, and the assistance amount at that time increased from $7,000 to $10,000. To date, the program's been utilized by 30 City of Flagstaff employees, and the loans have averaged about $8,300 per household. This past year, we did combine the funds from the Flagstaff Police Department Program and the General City Employee Program, and to have them on a first-come, first-served basis for all employees. The reason for that was that we haven't had a police officer utilize the funds since October 2020, so we felt it made sense to just create one employer-assisted housing program. So the current combined program balance is $175,000, and additional funds are requested through the city budget process every year. We did not ask for additional funds last year, but we have every year before that. All right, so the current program guidelines for our EAH program require that the homebuyer must have been an employee of the City of Flagstaff for at least a year. They must be a first-time homebuyer, as defined by HUD, in the Flagstaff area, and the program provides a one-to-one match up to $10,000 in the form of an interest-free deferred payment loan, and then that loan is forgiven 10% per year for every year of employment with the city. We do have some rules about the home purchase price not being able to exceed 125% of the FHA 203B mortgage insurance limit for the county. Currently, that is a little over $646,000. The home under our EAH program can be located anywhere in the FMPO. That includes Belmont, Kachina, Dona, and that's different than our community homebuyer assistance program where the home does have to be within the Flagstaff city limits. So all loans are repayable when the home is sold, when it's no longer occupied by the owner, or is refinanced for cash out, or if the individual is no longer employed with the city. So the Housing Section conducts an owner occupancy verification process to ensure compliance with the program. So the community homebuyer assistance program, we call that CHAP, was created with general funds back in 1998, and it was specifically to serve Flagstaff households that made too much to qualify for federally or state-funded homebuyer assistance but still needed that assistance to become local homeowners. So at the time, it served households up to 115% AMI that were mortgage-ready, but they made more than 80% AMI, which, if you'll remember, is the limit for all of our federal-funded programs. So CHAP has always been a revolving loan program, and it was also briefly called MEHAP for Middle Income Housing Assistance Program. So way back when, the initial program parameters included a loan up to 10K plus 3% of the purchase price for households that were at 85% or below, and then it was just the $10,000 loan for households between 85% and 115% AMI. That was then expanded to include households up to 125% AMI, and by 2005, loans up to $33,700 were available. In 2006, we introduced a shared equity model for loan repayment. It recaptures the original subsidy as well as a percentage of the appreciation, and we still use that equity share model for repayments for CHAP loans today. That initial program ended with a recession in 2008, and then in 2010, we started using our community development block grant funding for down payment assistance. That offered a loan up to $15,000 for households at 80% AMI or below, but ultimately, that money was deobligated and returned back to our CDBG funding pot because it wasn't being utilized. The assistance amount just didn't make homeownership accessible to households that were eligible. So in 2018, we created the program as it is today, and over $520,000 has been provided to 34 first-time homebuyers. Like I said before, currently, there's a little over $280,000 remaining of general funds for the CHAP program. So like EAH, all CHAP loans are repayable when the home is sold, no longer owner occupied, or is refinanced with cash out. At this time, the guidelines are that these funds can serve households up to 125% AMI. At this time, the guidelines are that these funds can serve households up to 125% AMI. So for a three-person household right now, that is a household that has an annual income of $96,750. They can receive assistance up to $15,000 as a three-to-one match, and the client must contribute a minimum of 1% of the purchase price through documented buyer funds. So the additional funds that make up the match, that can be from gifts or small private loans, things like that, and again, the home purchase price is limited. So we all know that our housing market is constantly changing, and this is just to highlight for you that in 2002, the median home sales price was 600, or 2012, okay, sorry. In 2022, the median home sales price was 615,000 compared to just 236,000 in 2012. So that is a 166% increase. We're also seeing a big difference in interest rates. So they've fluctuated a bit since they first started rising in 2022, but they remain high at 7.19% for a 30-year fixed-rate FHA loan compared to 2.97% just two years ago. Summer 2002 was the last time mortgage rates were above 7%, and summer 2008 was the last time they were above 6%. So just to kind of give you an idea of what's available on our market now, so this was, this data was collected about three weeks ago, right before we presented to the Housing Commission, and at the time, there were 16 FHA-eligible properties with a sales price under $450,000 available. Nine of those were condos. Oftentimes, condos are not actually eligible for FHA financing, and they also include a lot of HOA fees, which can quickly make the monthly payment unaffordable for low and moderate-income homebuyers. So as you can see in the chart below, it shows that our limited amount of assistance that CHAP can provide is really making the purchasing power of mortgage-ready households fall far below the market pricing. So all of our households served in 2022 utilized an additional subsidy program, and that would be like our down, our community land trust or deed-restricted units. So every single household that was able to access CHAP only was able to buy because they were below 80% AMI and had an additional subsidy in the form of a land trust unit or a deed-restricted unit. So in order to respond to the market changes and what we're seeing and who is being able to utilize this program, we have some recommended changes. First, I want to go over our EAH changes. So it includes changing things from, so we'll maintain the one-to-one match up to $10,000 in a forgivable loan, so that will continue to be forgiven 10% per year for every year of employment, but we would like to add an additional $10,000 that would be a non-forgiven loan that would be repayable at that trigger point. Someone doesn't work for the city anymore, they no longer owner-occupy, or they're selling the home. So we believe that this will really make it more possible for some of our city employees to actually have homeownership be attainable. We also know that the cities of Sedona and Cottonwood have both made similar changes to their employer-assisted housing programs. They offer assistance up to $40,000 as a four-to-one match for their employees. We also think it would be beneficial to remove the limits on home purchase price, not because we think folks should be able to purchase a home out of reach or out of their affordability, but this is really kind of an arbitrary statement. Home purchase price is already controlled through affordability and debt-to-income ratio program requirements. We don't allow folks to utilize the program if they're going to buy a home that is not affordable to them, that would have them housing cost burdened. All right, some of the changes to our CHAP program include, right now, it's a three-to-one match up to $15,000. We'd like to change that to an eight-to-one match up to $40,000, and that is a 166% increase, which coincides or corresponds to the 166% increase in the median home sales price right now. Instead of having the client contribute 1% of the purchase price, we'd like to change that to 1% or $1,000. And so this means that anyone that wants to utilize the program and purchase a home would need to show that they were able to save that $1,000 on their own and that it was not a gift from family or a workplace employer-assisted housing program. The additional funds that would make the match can be from a gift from a family member or what have you. And then again, we would just want to move that, remove that line about home price not exceeding the mortgage insurance limit because this already is controlled by debt-to-income ratio program requirements. So similar to EAH, the cities of Sedona and Cottonwood recently made changes to their workforce homeownership assistance program. They actually now serve households up to 150% AMI, and they have a four-to-one match up to $40,000. So you can see that they've made similar changes, but ours, we feel, are more specific to our community, and I think that theirs are probably more specific to their community. So to give you an idea, a household of three at 125% AMI has an annual income of $96,750, and with 15K, their max home purchase price is about $394,000, and with 40,000, it boosts them up to $419,000, which, as you all saw from the homes that are available on the market, it really means that a good 40 more units are available to them to purchase. So that kind of summarizes those changes. We did present these to the Housing Commission at their September meeting, and the Commission did vote to forward these changes to you with a recommendation for approval. We're really hopeful that they'll ensure that the CHAP program is serving the intended population and helping to provide workforce housing to not just low-income but also moderate-income households, as well as making homeownership accessible to our city employees, which, as you know, recruitment continues to be a challenge, so we hope that this will help aid that. I'm available to answer any questions you might have, and actually, we have Devonna McLaughlin from Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona here, and she'd be able to answer any questions as well. And then I hope you'll consider a motion to approve the amendment.
Thank you very much. Council, we do have a comment card from Devonna, and I know that we would all love to hear from her. Can I have her come up and speak before we ask any questions because she may answer questions that we may have? So come on down.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be in front of you tonight. I'm having logistic issues, I'm so sorry. I am Devonna McLaughlin. I have the honor of serving as the CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona, and we have been fortunate to partner with the city since 1999, well before I started. I know I've been there forever, but to help first-time homebuyers in our great community open the door to homeownership. And I just have to say that this program has literally changed lives, and it is amazing because in Flagstaff, it's like two degrees of separation, maybe one. We see people in professions, in work, at kids' hockey games, at soccer, who have benefited from this program years ago, maybe last year. Really, it's quite amazing to see that when you open the door to homeownership, it provides stability for a household, it provides an opportunity to generate wealth for the household. There's lots of people we hear from after they buy, years after they buy, saying if it wasn't for this program, they would not be in Flagstaff today. And those are folks who are working for your city government, those are folks that are responding to 911 calls, those are folks at the healthcare, Northern Arizona Healthcare, they work at Gore. So many employers in town benefit when their employees are able to stay here, and so I am just honored and blessed and thank you for the investment you've made in those homeowners in our community because it pays dividends back in our community. And I do want to take the time to thank staff for their thoughtful presentation and for bringing you forward recommendations that I think are balanced and measured and effective. We do have $280,000 left, we want to spend it. We work with clients every day. We've got seven or eight right now that are out searching for homes to purchase that are mortgage-ready, that have good credit, that have their own down payment, and they have to find the house. And the difference between $15,000 and $40,000 makes a difference, and it's investment. It's not a giveaway, it's not a handout, it will be repaid when that buyer sells the home, no longer owner occupies or refinances for cash out. You guys get repaid based on an equity share model that ensures that you benefit or you share in the appreciation to help families in the future reinvest in higher, because the prices keep going up, it's just crazy. And so this has been a tremendous program with a proven track record of success, and we're honored to be able to continue to administer this program in partnership with you to help six more families buy homes in our community. I'm happy to answer questions, but I just want to say thank you for the consideration tonight.
Thank you, Devonna.
I'm watching the timer countdown, so I was trying to get it right, so 16 seconds left.
Council, do you have any questions for Devonna? Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you. And I have a comment from Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christine and Devonna, and to the housing team for this work. I just wanted to reiterate, I was able to sit in on the Housing Commission meeting where this was presented and listen to the discussion there and so get a bit of a preview of this conversation in that context. And the thing that I really want to emphasize is to kind of just build off of what Devonna shared, how important this is as an investment in our community. But more than that, I just wanted to thank you all for not only making that investment but also in making that investment rise to the need of our community. One of the things that's really important in what's being proposed here is the fact that so many things in terms of our community's needs have changed over the years, and this is an opportunity that I see for us to really rise to that need and find some of those creative solutions that our community has been asking for. So I am eager to hear the rest of the conversation from council on this, and then I would love to make a motion on this when the time comes.
Thank you, councilmember. Do we have other comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to approve the recommended amendment two for the City of Flagstaff Employer-Assisted Housing and Community Homebuyer Assistance Program.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving down to item number 10B, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-24, an ordinance amending hours of use for city parks and the hours for lighting of sport courts within city parks.
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Council Amy Hagan, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. Just as a reminder, this stems from our conversation on September 26, and through that discussion, what city council elected was for on the sport court lighting, and that is at Bushmaster and Thorpe Parks. That would end at 9:00 PM, and then all parks would close at 10:00 PM. That's every day of the week. Now, the opening hours were listed as sunrise, where it is currently 5:30 in the morning. So the ordinance is written for sunrise to 9:00 PM for the lighted sport courts and sunrise to 10:00 PM for in-general park hours.
Questions, council? I'm going to take public comment if there are no questions. Okay. We have nothing online, but I see Adria Smith.
Last time we got together, I left very confused, much as I did on May 16. It left an impression that at least two of you have been thinking all these months that you voted on Council Matthews' first motion on the May 16 meeting to build new courts without lighting, that that was the compromise granted to the neighbors, that was the marble we got to take away. However, if you recall that confusing conversation, her motion was amended and here we are. I must say that hearing Vice Mayor's confusion appeal for dark-skY strategy to leave park play limited to daylight hours excited me and gave me some hope. However, the residents' issue, issues have never been about tennis and basketball play till 10:00 PM. The issue has always been about the invasive sound of pickleball and how to curb it. Turning court lights off at 9:00 PM instead of 10:00 is no solution nor a compromise. In fact, this decision now impacts another innocent group, the basketball and tennis players, especially those kids from siler homes. And by the way, those stadium lights on the existing courts cannot possibly be dark-skY compliant. I call them stadium lights. Yes, the bulbs were changed on the sidewalk lighting recently. Granting me and my neighbors one whole extra hour on summer evenings to enjoy our backyards is a very, very weak solution. Don't you all like to be outside having dinners, enjoying your backyards? I took on a second mortgage to build a patio and improve my outdoor enjoyment. Like I've mentioned before, I have not experienced the peaceful enjoyment of my property this summer, all except one evening on Labor Day, and it's only going to get worse when 16 courts are in use. Remember that the Pickleball Association sees Bushmaster as their home. This is to be their hub, incurring constant play plus tournaments. My vote is for zero lighting on the dedicated pickleball courts. You see, without any foresight as to how we are actually going to solve the hours of play rules, now we are haphazardly trying to piecemeal big problems with small solutions in a poor location. I've heard most of you express that you want to be considerate of the neighbors, but we are hardly feeling considered. My neighbors no longer come to these meetings, not because they are satisfied, it's because they are resigned that this process has gone terribly wrong since the start. Besides, are you aware that as of the last concept designed that Amy sent to Connie Folsom and me, 18 to 20 trees will be removed while cities across the country are rallying to plant more trees in neighborhoods and parks? I don't know what to say except that I keep coming to these meetings because I want to trust that you can do better. I know some of you have stated a motto of the city to protect well-being of citizens. Your voting record on this matter is not matching this motto for us. Will someone please ask me to finish my last thoughts?
Does someone have a question for Adria?
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy.
Thank you, Jim.
I would like to hear, I would like to know what else she had to say in a quick summary.
I'll be very quick. Your voting record on this matter is not matching this motto for us, the committed, dedicated year-round residents of this neighborhood. Please, please, I beg you, help us, help us, help us. We need your help. My thought on morning hours. I have to make a point, and it'll be quick. A few years ago, I was abruptly awakened at 6:00 AM to the rhythmic pulsing noise of a referee whistle. I got dressed and went out to the basketball court where a high school group from Phoenix was doing drills. I asked the coach if he could not use his whistle, and he argued that he had every right because Bushmaster is a public park. I called police. Officer let me know that he told the coach the park rule was no noisy play until 8:00 AM. So that's a confusion, a point of confusion that comes up with the sunrise hours of play. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Adria. Council, do you have questions for Amy?
I have a couple of questions, Amy. Can you speak to the current lighting and then the proposed lighting?
At Bushmaster Park? So the current lighting, if I'm not mistaken, is from the late '90s, I want to say 1997. It is sport court lighting. Can I state if it's dark skies compliant? It does have shields on it and does point directly downward, it's not pointing outward. So I believe it does meet current dark skies complacency. The new proposed lighting on the eight proposed courts would be significantly more toward that dark skies complacency. There is significantly better lighting system than from nearly 30 years ago.
And the previous lighting is not scheduled to be changed at this point, correct?
Correct. On the tennis and basketball courts, it would remain as is.
And so if we change these hours, it, you'll have to replace signs and, do you see it becoming an enforcement problem with having different hours at different parks?
I do not see an enforcement problem. I do not see an enforcement problem, because there are two park locations, our Regional Park, Thorpe Park, with lighted tennis courts, and then Bushmaster Park, a community park with lighted basketball and tennis courts currently today. That is the only differential in this. Otherwise, all 24 parks will close at 10:00 PM. It's just the lighting aspect amenity in those two park locations that's 9:00 PM in this proposed ordinance.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCarthy has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. The word disrespectful is like in the forefront here. People that live in this area will be unable to use their backyards because this, with the pickleball noise, they really can't go out there and, you know, go out in their backyard, sit around the table, sip iced tea or whatever. So, to me, it's very disrespectful. So, I would suggest that we, on the new pickleball courts, or on all the pickleball courts, not allow any lighting at night, but would allow up till 10 o'clock as proposed for, I guess it's up to 9 o'clock, I'm sorry, for basketball and other sports. The real problem is pickleball, because it's substantially louder than the existing uses in the park. So, I guess that's my main concern. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Councilmember. And unless Councilmember wants to move to postpone the, this issue to a time certain, the question on the table is regarding lighting closing off at 9:00 or 10:00. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I just had a clarifying question on the comment about the trees. What, is there a plan to replace trees that we're taking down?
For the proposed pickleball courts at Bushmaster Park? Yes. We are currently in contract negotiations for the design of the courts, which would include a one-for-one. For every tree taken out, a new tree must be planted on site.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, we've talked, just in discussions, and I don't remember if we, it was part of the agreement to do some sound abatement, planting different trees or putting up a wall. Is that something that we're going to do moving forward, or where are we with that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Matthews. I believe that's a future discussion item. If not mistaken, that was a part of a previous fair item a few weeks ago. And that will be a part of the discussion with the design of these courts, which does go through the design review process here at the City of Flagstaff. So, I think in combination with that future agenda item, agenda meeting item for us here at City Council, which I don't think will occur till maybe at best mid-December, and then I'll also have some details from the design review process on just the design of these courts. So, be able to combine the two into one conversation.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I will move to read ordinance number 2023-24 by title only for the first time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'd like to make an amendment. I would like to make an amendment. This is Jim McCarthy.
But just a minute. Councilmember McCarthy, there's already been a second on the motion. So, we have to vote on this motion before we could entertain an amendment.
Actually, Mayor.
Oh.
Actually, Mayor, this is Sterling.
Hi, Sterling.
I just wanted to jump in. Thank you. Technically, the amendment needs to be made before the vote is taken on the original motion. And then the amendment needs to be voted on to determine whether the original motion will be voted on with the amendment or without the amendment.
Okay. My apologies, Councilmember McCarthy.
No, all good, all good.
And Sterling?
So, my understanding is that if I make a motion and then it passes, then that'll be part of the primary motion, or if it fails, then the, then we will have a vote on the primary motion without the amendment.
That is correct.
Thank you. Actually, I think I'd like to make two amendments, one at a time, so we can vote on them separately. My first amendment is that...
Actually, Councilmember McCarthy, Councilmember McCarthy, if I may, that really complicates things even further. If you could make all of your amendments in one motion to amend, it really simplifies things. Just suggest, you can do it however you choose.
Well, the problem with that is that someone, the council might like one of my amendments, but not the other ones.
Again, you can do it however you choose. Thank you.
All right. So, I will move to amend that the pickleball courts not have lighting, but the lighting on all other sports will be as discussed already. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
So, Sterling, just to make sure that I'm clear, the motion is to read the ordinance by title for the first time only, including the amendment that the pickleball courts will have...
No. We have to vote on the amendment.
Right, right. Councilmember McCarthy, I think the mayor needs to finish asking your question first.
Yes, thank you.
And then I'll answer that, and then we'll go from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So, we are voting on the motion, and then we're going back, I mean, we're voting on the amendment, and then we're going back to the ordinance.
If the amendment passes, then it will be incorporated into the actual first motion that was made to read the ordinance. If the amendment does not pass, then you're going back to the original motion as it was noted.
Thank you. And Kevin?
So, this is just a call for a vote on the amendment.
We have a comment from Kevin Fensel.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you very much, Kevin Fensel, Deputy City Attorney. I'm commenting because I assisted Amy with drafting this ordinance. And I just want to remind Counsel that this ordinance is really about lighting in general. An amendment to this ordinance, we wouldn't put in this ordinance or in the code which courts are actually lit. And I think Amy mentioned earlier that there's, you're going to be talking about the design of the pickleball courts at a future meeting, and I think that's when you would talk about whether or not to light these pickleball courts, because this, I wouldn't put that in the, in the ordinance or in the city code.
Because it would then pertain to every park?
Not necessarily. It's just that this, this ordinance is specifically talking about sport court lighting and the hours that that sport court lighting will be turned off. If you decide later on to not put any lighting on the pickleball courts, that, that'll work just fine without this ordinance as currently drafted. I think where Mr. McCarthy, where Councilwoman McCarthy is going here, it would actually amend this ordinance. And I just, what I'm telling you is I wouldn't put that type of amendment in this ordinance. I wouldn't put anything about specific pickleball courts in this section of the city code. This section of the city code is specific about when we light courts, not whether courts actually have lighting on them. And I see Amy nodding her head. Amy, might I correct here in how you would be, how, I mean, if we don't want to light the pickleball courts, I think it would be at that future meeting.
That is correct.
So, hearing that, Councilmember McCarthy, would you like to withdraw your motion?
All right. I'll withdraw. Out of respect for our attorney's office, I will withdraw this, and but it'll come up again. And then I'm going to make a separate motion. You need to see if the person seconding my amendment is agreeable to a withdrawal.
Are you agreeable?
I am, and I will just comment that I think this amendment is consistent with my original ideas of not lighting only pickleball courts. And I think that's a conversation we can still pursue contextually and specifically for, for future amenities around pickleball. So, it's perfectly within my comfort level to withdraw, seconding the amendment to the motion, and having that conversation in due time.
Thank you. All right. So, let me, let me take a breath here for just a second. Let me just take a breath here for just a second. Councilmember Matthews, did you have a question about the specifics that we're talking about?
I did, Mayor. Amy, I just wanted to have you restate, so it's clear in my mind, the ordinance that you're, the amendments that you're presenting today will be for the whole park at Bushmaster with these new hours, and the non-sport court parks will have the separate hours. And then we can, in the future, when we are talking about the design at the pickleball courts, that's when we can implement no lights.
Thank you for the question. So, for clarity, and I'll go slow and pause at each item if that helps. So, the ordinance in front of us today is in regard to changes or amendments to the current city code. So, the changes entail all in general park hours, so that's for all 24 of our current parks in our park system, no matter what day of the week, closing at 10:00 PM. And then sport court lighting, wherever it exists, it just happens to exist in two large parks today, would end at 9:00 PM every day of the week. So, that is what the ordinance entails in the language and text in the ordinance today. And then, yes, at a future date, and my anticipation is sometime in mid-December, I'll be able to bring forward as a full agenda item to City Council in discussion regarding the design of the proposed pickleball courts at Bushmaster Park that include currently today lighting, but we will discuss it at that time.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy, do you want to voice your question?
Yeah. Amy, would you please review, and I know you just said it a few minutes ago, the opening times for the parks and for when lighting, well, I guess it's, yeah, the opening hours.
Of course, Councilmember McCarthy.
They are now, what, yes.
Of course, absolutely. Councilmember McCarthy, if I understood you correctly, so, opening hours of all parks, so all 24 of those parks in our system is sunrise. So, that will differ depending on the day, but sunrise. There will not be any lighting opportunities in the morning hours of these sport courts, no lighting opportunities.
All right.
Thank you, Amy. So, Councilmember McCarthy, do you still have an amendment that you would like to propose?
I propose to amend the proposal on the table to say that the parks will open at either sunup or 8:00 AM, whichever is later.
All right. Do we have a second for that? And then we can go to discussion if there's a second?
Madam Mayor, I'm just taking a second to look up some sort of chart that shows me when sunrise is at this latitude throughout the year. I'm not sure it's going to be relevant. I'm not sure we have sunrise after 8:00 AM ever at this latitude.
I would agree with you, Vice Mayor. I think it rarely occurs after 8:00 AM at this latitude.
I think it's a moot point.
All right. So, there is no second, so that amendment fails. Now, we are looking for a motion to read the ordinance for the first time by title only.
Mayor, we actually had that motion made.
That's right. That was a long time ago, and I've forgotten. We had a, we had a motion and a second, didn't we? All right. So, any additional discussion?
I, I just want to note that it seems that the latest sunrise ever occurs in Flagstaff is 7:35.
Thank you. All those in favor?
May I comment to that? The real issue is earlier than that. For instance, if the sun's up at 6:00, can people make noise between 6:00 and 8:00? The motion failed, so it's moot, but you're looking at it backwards.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take a vote. The motion to remind everyone was to read ordinance number 2023-24 by title only for the first time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending city code Title 8 Public Ways and Property, Chapter 11 Policies Regarding Use of Municipal Parks, Section 8-11-001-0005, used by the general public slash hours of use, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. So, we're moving down to item number 10C, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-23, an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for a fiber network as a betterment to the Rio de Flag Control Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Bryce Doty, real estate manager. This ordinance today authorizes the, the authority to acquire fiber easements along and within the channel for the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project. So, Council has in the past authorized the, the right to purchase the easements that we need for the project. So, we've, you've authorized channel improvement easements, and this is just going to add the addition, the additional right, the kind of bundle of sticks, the right to put fiber within that line. As you'll see here, let's see. Just, just kind of giving you the visual here, but really, all this is, is it's primarily all through existing right-of-way, but for those portions where we do need easements on private properties, we are going to ask for and acquire fiber easement rights so that we can run fiber as a betterment to the project. And these are the segment maps for the, the core, so these are identifying all the parcels that we need. The red line is just where we want to put the fiber, and that's starting at Francis Short Pond, and then we're heading south all the way to the, to the railroad tracks, and then it's going to pick back up where the site of the new DCC is, and then it's going to run all the way down Mike's Bike, crossing Milton, and then terminating at Blackbird Roost down in the west of town. And so, that's what this ordinance acquire, accomplishes. It's going to use the same legal descriptions for, as, that we already have for the channel improvement easements, and we're just asking you to authorize it so we can begin sending out those offers. And that's all I have, available for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Vice Mayor?
Just at the risk of being obvious, this is very consistent with our desire for a dig-wants policy, correct?
Correct. This will be part of the construction plan set, is to, they'll place the fiber, and then we'll either run it at a later date, but we'll have that conduit existing there so that we can run it.
Any additional questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to read ordinance number 2023-23 by title only for the first time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for a fiber network as a betterment to the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bryce. Okay.
Okay. We are going to take a 15-minute break. Okay. We are reconvening, and we are down to discussion items. 11A, Update on the Downtown Vision and Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle McNulty, the Planning Director for the City of Flagstaff. I just want to give a brief introduction to the consultant team that will be giving today's presentation on the Downtown Vision and Action Plan. Chaney Bostick and Brad Siegel with Puma, progressive urban management associates are here this evening, as well as Terry Modeska, the Executive Director for the Flagstaff Downtown Business Association. Just as a quick reminder, the Downtown Vision and Action Plan is being led by the Flagstaff Downtown Business Association in partnership, or I'm sorry, the Alliance, in partnership with the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, NAPDA. And this plan serves as the DBA's strategic plan and will guide public and private investments over the next decade. And with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to our consultant team. Thanks.
Yeah, of course you're going to stand here. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see you all again. My name is Brad Siegel, President of Puma. Joining me tonight is Chaney Bostick, who's also the Principal of Studio Seed. She's been our partner on this project and many, many, many other projects throughout the West. It is really our pleasure to be here tonight and present to you where we are with the Downtown Vision Plan. You may recall, we kicked this off, we were actually hired in February of 2020 to put together the Downtown Vision Plan. And the world substantially changed within weeks of after us being hired. We adapted, we kept going. Flagstaff was actually the only site visit we conducted in that first year of the pandemic. We, we drove down here in August and met with folks outside, conducted substantial outreach through online means, and put together a draft of a new downtown vision moving forward. Tonight, we're going to walk you through the highlights of that. We'll take maybe 20, 25 minutes, and then we'll have time for obviously any questions or comments that you may have. The draft plan after that initial start was presented to the DBA Board in May of '21. It was, went on hold for a variety of reasons. So about three months ago, we started working with city staff and DBA staff to update the plan, get into the post-pandemic mode of, of what makes sense in this plan, and also get the plan consistent with what's going on currently in Flagstaff and some of the planning activities over the last couple of years. We found that about 90% of the work that we put together through '21 still applies, and we hope that the adjustments that we're presenting tonight enrich the plan and make it very timely for today moving forward. So in terms of current conditions that we're responding to, we are coordinating with the regional plan that's underway, coordinating with the Active Transportation Master Plan that was adopted last year, acknowledging that the hospital location is in flux, may or may not be at its current location, and looking at how that impacts downtown, updating the plan to reflect that we're no longer in a pandemic, we're post-pandemic moving forward, and also emphasizing policies and, and different ideas that directly address both the housing and climate emergencies. So at this point, we're hoping that we can refine the final plan over the next couple of months. There'll be additional public input, review by different commissions within the city. The plan will be available for public review for a period of time, and hope is that the Council will consider approval of the plan by the end of the year. As a refresher, key policy recommendations of this plan, really promoting downtown as the hub of economic activity and innovation, not just for Flagstaff but for the whole region, preserving and protecting the historic core of downtown. This was the number one priority of the community through our surveys and our communication. This plan certainly redoubles those efforts. Implementing the city's carbon neutrality plan, acknowledging that downtown is that place where people can live, can work, can play in an area that is not dependent on vehicles and other, can use other modes. Allowing for change, that downtown's not static, that there is the opportunity for density around that historic core, and that density could actually strengthen the historic core and could address some of the pressing issues within the city. We do address parking and parking management, how we, how we, how we best manage the existing parking supply, and how we grow any new parking supply in a very intentional and deliberate manner. This is a particular priority of the small businesses downtown and their customers. Encouraging local arts culture, native expression to flourish in downtown, and also creating a downtown experience that welcomes and celebrates everyone that makes up the mosaic of Flagstaff. These are excerpts of the plan. I'll just point out some of the key, key attributes that are behind all of this. Extensive community outreach, more than 2,000 inputs through this process. In some ways, the pandemic democratized some of our process by getting more input online, and then, of course, we had the, the onsite engagement as well. 1,250 Flagstaff citizens chimed in on the online survey, giving us ideas, priorities, what they would really like to see for downtown. Extensive involvement through working groups, committees for downtown stakeholders, and folks from adjacent neighborhoods. The plan is bolstered by a comprehensive market assessment. The market assessment looked at economic conditions really in 2019, so it provides a baseline for pre-pandemic Flagstaff, and that's going to be critically important moving forward. So as we look at change, as we look at opportunities in the years ahead, having this baseline data from 2019 becomes super important. In general, we find, we found that downtown was strong in all of these different sectors, live, workshop, dine, visit, stay. Live, there are more residential opportunities and demand for downtown. Work, a variety of employment opportunities ranging from small entrepreneurial ventures to a need for and an opportunity for more primary employment to be centered in downtown and adjacent areas. Shop and dine, looking at a continuation of local independent small businesses, all look, also looking at business concepts that are not just for visitors but are also for local residents and for neighborhoods adjacent to downtown. Visit and stay, downtown remains a strong visitor destination. We compared you to other markets, other intermountain markets that have colleges, large colleges, have similar growth patterns. So you'll see throughout the market assessment, we compare Flagstaff to communities such as Bend, Oregon, Fort Collins, Colorado, Missoula, Montana, Bellingham, Washington, Boulder, Colorado, and Corvallis, Oregon. The plan then provides a vision. Now we start getting into what's next. So all that background data, the, the community engagement, the market assessment, provided the basis for what's next downtown. The vision for downtown, what the community, what we heard from the community, they want a downtown, we want a downtown that's vibrant, walkable, rollable, historic, also adaptable, that is not just caught in one moment in time, that it's thriving, that it's welcoming and inclusive, really the living room for the whole community, and accessible to all. The chart on the bottom of this page shows the structure of the plan itself. The vision is reinforced by a whole series of catalytic projects. Chaney's going to talk about those in a moment. And then there's an action plan. How do we actually implement this stuff? And, and we looked at three categories. Economic vitality, making sure, again, how does downtown be that hub of economic activity and opportunity for the region? Experience and urban design and mobility. The action plan, there are almost 100 recommendations in the action plan, but they are sequenced. So some of these are near-term, some are midterm, some are long-term. We also look at what makes sense for the city to lead, the DBA to lead, and other partners as well. That's all spelled out in the action plan. So at this point, I think I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Chaney, and she's going to walk you through some of the catalytic projects that came up through this process.
Thanks, Brad. Hi, Mayor, Council. Thank you. It's good to be back in Flagstaff, and I will present just a, a couple slides on the catalytic projects. So the vision part of the plan, we visualize some opportunities that the downtown should focus on to achieve the goals in the plan. We've broken the catalytic projects into redevelopment and parking projects, and then the placemaking projects. So this is more of a partnership with developers and private sector. It's, it's vision for privately owned land. Some of it is actually owned by the city and county, so that's in there as well. But just to give a disclaimer that these are not architecture, they're just kind of massing studies and, and, and goals and, and guidelines for what could happen on these sites. This map highlights a lot of opportunity. That orange color kind of represents where we found future redevelopment opportunities to be. On the slide before, when we compare Flagstaff to our peer communities, it actually came in last in residential and employment density. So you are, you know, lower on the scale of density, both in residential and employment numbers, than all of your peer communities that we looked at. So these kind of orange blobs on the map are typically parking lots. We're not looking, we're the surface parking. They're underutilized sites that could be better utilized for housing and employment and other uses to make your downtown more vibrant. So I'll just walk through a few of these that we have in the plan. Number one being the old city courthouse. So again, this is just a simple massing study, but we did talk to the community and stakeholders about what they want to see in like opening up the alleys and creating a pedestrian alley, permeability, making sure that the massing is controlled and it doesn't appear as one huge building, but meeting that service as a gateway into the, into the downtown, and that's a key site. So we have guidelines in here about how that development proposal, and we know that you're getting close to issuing an RFQ for that, so it's very important that those guidelines are followed from the plan. We also looked at county property, and, and, and back in 2019, 2020, there was, it was in flux whether the county would stay or, or move out of downtown. We know that they are remaining in downtown, which is great, and adds to that employment density that we need. But there are ways to look at better utilizing the county properties as well. So we look at infilling parking lots, adding parking structures that could be multi-use parking structures, serve the community, you know, perhaps at night for nightlife activities, and then employees during the day. And then we have some other sites around downtown. Birch Avenue was one that we looked at. There was a synergy or a focus of, of underutilized properties. It's actually two banks, but as, as we all know in this day and age, you know, going into a bank and doing, everything's online, so what are those going to look like in the future, and is there a better use of that land? So we show some opportunities for providing housing and mixed use and bringing more activity into and around the civic core with the courthouse and the theater company as well. As well as the east side gateway, this is a major one. So around Verde and Route 66, we see this as a major opportunity. It's outside of the historic core. It is an area where, actually, it slopes down too, so it is an area where you could have taller buildings without, without impacting views. Again, if they're scaled correctly, and we have guidance in there for that, but that, that whole area is, is a, an opportunity for downtown to expand and thrive in the future as well. And then on the south side, we looked at Cottage Avenue. It's listed in the south side community plan as a main street for the south side, and so we looked at opportunities and concepts for, again, infilling those, those underutilized lots with more placemaking, pocket parks, active uses, housing, and mixed use. And then for the placemaking projects, these are more of the public realm. So we're talking here about public properties, streets, alleys, downtown connection center, and how those could be better utilized moving forward to serve your downtown. A listed as the downtown connection center, which is now under construction, which is great. That's going to bring, and the downtown mile project, that's, there's a lot of synergy between those two projects and the downtown plan, and we've, that's one of the updates was going through the plan and making sure that we've accounted for those planned and funded projects. E is, is kind of, all of, all of those streets, major streets, gateways, really creating an identity. You've arrived in Flagstaff. Directing people, if we want to get people out of their cars and walking around and using multi-modes, they need signage and directional signage to tell them where to go and what's downtown to see. This was a fun concept that came out of the plan, making La Rue a festival street where it could be designed as a flexible space where cars are allowed to drive on it, you know, during the day in regular hours, but that during special events and festivals, it could be shut down to autos and used as a pedestrian street. And so we have concept design in there as well, and also how it connects to the visitor center and the transit center. And then finally, Heritage Square activation and alley activation was a big one that came out of, out of the plan, and I think these would have came out of the plan regardless, but it was even more impactful because of COVID. In, in our line of work, we saw this happen all over the country, that, that cities, you know, started to re-envision and reuse their downtown squares, their alleys, their streets even. We actually helped you guys implement your expanded use of right-of-way, that expanded café seating during COVID. We actually donated our travel budget to pay for like seating and things to make that become a reality. So we have worked on, in many communities where this is becoming a trend, and you want to make these public spaces, which we used to think of as just for a single use, for autos or for, you know, plaza space for events. Now they're becoming very flexible spaces and trying to get creative with how those could be used in the future. So we also recommend Heritage Square and alley activation as a way to beautify and activate your downtown in different ways. And I'm going to turn it back over to Brad.
Final three slides. We just wanted to summarize different edits that have been made to this plan. So back in '21, when we were reviewing the first iteration of this, there were a number of edits. The county, again, had changed its policy about moving out of downtown. There were some language and some history edits that we made. Updated ground floor uses to allow more than retail. This is also going to be important moving forward. Storefront activation, a priority not just in Flagstaff but virtually every community we're working in right now in a downtown. So include co-working, incubators, maker spaces, smaller leasable spaces that small local businesses can afford. We've done a lot of work with the DBA, and there's a section of this plan that looks at strengthening the DBA moving forward. The intention here is public-private partnership, that it's really not the city nor the DBA alone, but really merging both entities and other partners to collaboratively work toward improving downtown. Major edits this, this go-round. So within the last couple of months, working with city staff, working with the DBA, we updated a lot, got rid of a lot of pandemic language since we're past that, looked at some historical context and Navajo origin language, and worked with cultural resources within the city to make sure we got that right. More responses to the urgent housing and climate initiatives and needs that Flagstaff has continued to focus on, on the last couple of years. Coordination with Regional Plan 2045 and Planning Department Goals, and a lot of discussion over the last few months with the planners. Coordination with Regional Transportation Plan, Downtown Mile, and, and also just updating the, the plan to acknowledge some of the investments and projects that are currently underway. So last slide, next steps. We're here, the engagement with the community will continue with DBA and staff, working with different commissions over the next four to six weeks. We do propose to put the plan on the DBA, perhaps city website, and launch a survey where people can review the plan and give us their thoughts. What do they like? What do they not like? Anyone in Flagstaff would have the ability to opine on that. And then Michelle knows more about this than I do, but then back to you, not for adoption but for approval, a formal approval process coming back to you before the end of the year. So with that, any final thoughts? Terry or Michelle? Great.
I'm just happy to answer questions.
Yeah. So we're happy to be here in person, live, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Terry, are you sure you don't want to say?
Terry, are you sure you don't want to say anything?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, if given the opportunity, I would love to add comment. Well, thank you. Again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Terry Medexa. I'm the Executive Director of the Flagstaff Downtown Business Alliance. As Brad said, it is our pleasure to be here tonight in person with our consultant team to share this update. There's been a lot of work that has gone into reinvigorating the plan to make sure we're working with current city, county, mountain line and community priorities. That's all been folded into this this draft that you have before you. There is still time, though, for us to seek not only your feedback, but feedback from our community partners and Flagstaff residents at large. So we will come back to you again once we hear from more people. And really what we're trying to do is make downtown a place for people not just to visit. We love our visitors. We want to keep our our visitation strong. We just want to add a residential and a primary employment component so that strengthens the downtown we know and love and can continue to contribute in making Flagstaff a healthy and economically viable city. And I think downtown plays a big role in that. So we just want to reflect what we're hearing as priorities, get some residents living, walking, working, spending downtown, and checking or participating in what the priorities of the city and our and our community have voiced. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions, council? Councilmember House?
Thank you guys so much for this presentation. I really loved all of it and especially some of the additions that you've made. I did have a question about the the action aspect of it. I was reading through the, I think it's chapter five or towards the back, discussing the implementation, and I'm wondering if you can just give us a little bit more of an overview of how we move this from vision into action.
Yeah, I'll let Brad speak first and chime in after. So Brad.
Thanks. Great question. We've worked in many communities that, you know, there's some frustration with past planning efforts. We did this great plan. It was wonderful, and then bam, nothing happened. So we actually pride ourselves on strong implementation strategies, so I'll just preface my comments with that. There are those three different bundles that I mentioned earlier, and there's an anticipation that the DBA and the city would be shepherding or leading those bundles. We have carefully sequenced what makes sense. We don't want to leave you with 100 ideas and not a roadmap of how are we actually going to do this stuff. So part of these ideas, maybe a third of the ideas, make sense in the near term, which is the next couple of years, and then the next set of ideas fold in, and then the next set of ideas fold in. So it is sequenced. The plan also looks at financing, and that's often an overlooked aspect of a plan like this. So we look at a variety of different financing sources. Some of those are cities. Some of those are the DBA being more entrepreneurial moving forward. We also look at how other mechanisms that are being talked about to solve citywide challenges could be employed in downtown. So for example, community land trust, I believe, is something that's that's on the front burner here. That could have applications downtown as well. It's not just other parts of the city. The last thing I'll say is that, really to directly answer your question, implementation will will depend on the strength of the partnership that's being developed here. So I mentioned earlier, public-private partnership, and we do have recommendations on the DBA side. I think I'm not out of school by saying that one of the reasons we were hired is is a desire to have a stronger DBA moving forward. Downtown business alliances are common in in cities throughout the country, throughout Arizona. I will say that yours in the past has been undercapitalized and has been spread very thin. So we do have recommendations for the DBA to strengthen them, to diversify their funding and to be a more active partner with the city moving forward. And then there are other partners. I think some of them are in the room today, but there are other partner organizations as well. So implementation to us really relates to the strength of this plan, helping to create a public-private partnership where the city, the DBA are the core. There are other partners, and hopefully guided by the sequencing and the resource options, we can get some stuff done.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmember House, I just wanted to add to that. Puma, as our experts, came in and created this plan. The implementation strategy is just that. This is provided to us by our experts, but I want to point out that it has been vetted by city staff. We have had active participation from, I think, every single division at the city, not just from the division director level, but from staff as well. So from beautification, from parks, from economic vitality, from planning, they have all had the chance to review and weigh in and actually provide feedback specific to the implementation. Yes, we can do this. No, we cannot. And that has been reflected. So I think what we have at the end of this process is going to be a document that is doable, it's achievable, it's it's something for us to accomplish, and it's something for us to measure. And that was built with partners at the city and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? I have a question regarding feedback. What would be a productive way for for people to comment and give you feedback on this before it comes back to council?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, we're we're working really hard to sort of figure that out. We are going to post this plan on our website, so anybody will have access. I will share the link with you once it's live. It will be done by the end of this week. We'll issue a press release. We'll invite people to read the plan, and then we're going to work with Puma to help develop questions, to ask and seek people's input and feedback, to make sure we know what people like, what people don't like, what people want to see changed. So we're going to cast a wide net, and we'll seek some general feedback that way. In addition, we are making the rounds to commissions. I've already spoken to the Sustainability Commission. I am planning to speak to beautification, and there's a few others that we'll be working to schedule to seek feedback in those forums. And then we have also sent this out sort of specific to community partners. So Creative Flagstaff has received it, F-Cubed has received it, and some other partners that we work with so so very closely, we've already sent it out seeking their feedback. So we'll keep working at it. We want to make sure we come back to you with a good story and some broad support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming in and and being here in person. Great to see you. And I also wanted to thank you for donating the furniture from your travel fund. I didn't realize you did that, so thank you. Customers definitely enjoyed that. In no particular order, I just wrote down some comments that, you know, this plan, I dove deep on it and I'm very supportive, and I can see the collaboration that it took, and I appreciate that everyone worked together on this. And it does include tackling our housing and climate emergencies, and I think that's important for everyone to remember, and it creates a live, work, play experience for our our residents, and I love that. And it has vision, and it has tangible things that we can do to make that vision happen. And I think that's very exciting. I love our downtown. I am just beyond thrilled to see that there is that vision, and I hope that I'm here to see everything come to fruition because it's it's going to be an amazing place. It already is, and it'll just be even more amazing. And I just want to thank you all again for all of your work.
Yes, thank you. And if there are no additional comments, do you have a comment, Vice Mayor?
Oh, sure. I don't want to I don't want to take up time on the mic just to hear myself talk, but I do I do suppose I want to weigh in, and I think this is the appropriate location and time to telegraph some of my own thoughts and the ways that I think about this and the way I process all of it. Very glad to have you guys on board. It's so nice that we're going through this process, that it's a public process, that it's being well-engaged and over time, and that you're capturing changes in attitudes as our, you know, our city continues to evolve and experience uncertainty in a lot of ways and just rolling with the punches in so many different ways. I do want to talk about carbon neutrality goals a little bit and just push for a much higher density of a downtown. This is kind of a new way of thinking for a lot of people probably, but I think the the future of Flagstaff is going to be at its best if we have lots of density downtown, more residents living downtown. This includes taller buildings. It includes parking headaches and thinking about the way we get around and our view sheds and just a lot of different things. We're going to have to be able to open up to and embrace some urban philosophies and ideas for our downtown region. It's very important that we do that. Otherwise, we end up with sprawl and we end up with a community that's just spreading out like like cultures on an auger plate unchecked. That pressure will go where it can, and it's important for us to it's important for us up here to really facilitate that conversation and help move folks along on it. The importance of a vibrant urban downtown for a town this size and for a town that's going to continue to grow has really been impressed upon me, and I do feel it's incumbent upon me to carry that message forward and to help people evolve in their thinking with how Flagstaff should should approach its near future. We can protect what we have on the outer rim, on the outer ring of what Flagstaff is by leaning into some of the possibilities that are available to us in the in the modern urban environment that Flagstaff could potentially offer us. And the most important thing in this whole process is that there's public input, there's public buy-in, and that it's a very transparent, honest, authentic conversation and very, very feel very privileged to be a part of it and to be a part of the hive mind that is going to be thinking through some of these things in the past, now, and at least for a little while into the future. I'm really looking forward to all the exciting innovations that we're going to experience and explore together.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. And just to expand a little bit, I do appreciate in the plan that it is intentional density. And if you look at the locations, it kind of bookends our downtown. It doesn't take away from the historic value. It it really does add that in the right spot, and I appreciate that you looked at that. Thank you.
Mayor, may I provide a comment? Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, these comments really are so wonderful to hear. I just wanted to sort of expand a little. You heard Brad mention that we started this process a long time ago, and for a variety of reasons, we were delayed. But that delay, while unfortunate, has actually brought us to a place where I think as a community and as policymakers, we're able to look at downtown as a place for some potential density in the right places to fit our environment. Three years ago, we were very skeptical of even using the term gentle density, and now, three years later, with a housing and a climate emergency and and existing surface lots that are underdeveloped, we're we're now able to have this conversation with downtown as part of the solution. And so to me, yes, we've been delayed, and there have been frustrations, but we're in a place right now where I think this community and our policymakers are ready to have this conversation, and downtown is part of it. If there's going to be any kind of density, downtown is the right place. It's walkable, it's accessible to transportation. We have surface lots that could be developed. We're not we're not looking at taking down buildings or trees. We're looking at underdeveloped parcels as they stand today, which are asphalt. And so to me, thinking about how the perimeter of our historic core can redevelop is very exciting, and I think the that the timing, despite the unfortunate delay, the timing is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. All right, I'm going to take public comment. We have Jonathan Stone from Creative Flagstaff.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Jonathan Stone, and I'm the Executive Director of Creative Flagstaff. I realized I hadn't spent a long time where I've never had the opportunity to fill out a public comment card. So I for the city of Flagstaff, and some of you know that I'm a former downtown manager, so I love to, when I get to advocate for historic business districts and arts and culture together. And of course applaud the comprehensive planning process and the partnerships it represents. Creative Flagstaff, of course, loves placemaking. You see that in in the projects that we've created, especially Art X, and how that kind of activates public spaces and what that maybe means longer term. Mixed use, just on a personal note, is something that I think helps create a lot more vibrancy. The plan provides a framework to move forward in a coordinated way for our civic center, and also I acknowledge it's not our only business center, but it's an important business center, and that downtown management relies on consensus and strong partnerships. As you can imagine, the goal to cultivate local arts and culture as a foundation to downtown is of keen interest and presents a number of opportunities to emphasize arts and culture for the community and tourism. And I would like to share that just last week, Americans for the Arts released its National Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. In 2022, cultural nonprofits, arts and culture nonprofits nationally generated $151 billion in economic activity, and locally, that was nearly 90 million. And you can imagine that if you expand beyond just our nonprofit sector to our for-profit and micro-business, Orpheum, downtown galleries, and much more, that that number expands quite a bit. And so arts are a winning strategy for economic development and community health and well-being. And so thank you downtown for including arts and culture as part of that in the city and parts city and other partners for embracing that opportunity. I just want to say that Creative Flagstaff is charged with cultural planning for the city, and assuming this plan moves forward, we look forward to being an active participant. And our board looks forward to discussing the vision in more detail with the DBA. One objective of note is the discussion about new arts facilities, and that one is one that will require due diligence, which is part of Creative Flagstaff's strategic plan. It is safe to assume that downtown should be home to significant cultural facilities, and you might even consider what that means with respect to one of the catalytic sites. While my comments are focused on cultural goals and objectives, there's lots of other ways to provide the plan provides opportunities for partnerships within and beyond the cultural sector. So thank you for considering the plan.
Thank you. Very well timed.
It's like I planned it.
All right. Additional comments or questions, council? I don't see any additional public participation. So thank you so very much for the great and thorough presentation, and I look forward to continuing to discuss this. One moment, Councilmember McCarthy has a comment.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As I read through this a few days ago before this meeting, there was a couple key words that came out that really resonated with me, and I just want to repeat those words. Liveable, a place where people can live, walkable, because that's what makes a downtown. Liveable, a place where people can live, walkable, because that's what makes a downtown, and mixed use, which of course is commercial on the first floor, maybe the second floor, but then residential above that. And those are some of the things I picked out of the plan that I think are key to it being successful. I love our downtown. I think I told Terri once that when I was working on my master's degree, they told us that there was only two kinds of downtowns, ones that are getting better and ones that are getting worse. They never stay the same. And I think we're on the route to have a better downtown. It's great already, but it's going to be better yet. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you again. All right, we are moving down to 11B, Discussion of the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission Report. Welcome.
All right. Where's the slide presenter view? That guy?
Yep.
That one?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for making some time to chat about the Wildfire Mitigation and Management Commission Report. I'm going to go through a little history of how this report came together, some themes and recommendations, and I think my, my big takeaway is, please read the report. We'll get you guys a copy if you want one. I know it's large, but this is, this is very important. This is going to set the narrative for how we as a nation live with wildfire, prescribed fire, indigenous cultural burning, all kinds of incredible themes for, for many years to come. So just to give you a little background again on our, our wildland fire management program, increase and maintain wildfire resilience, thinking about our, the mission and vision of our city, our fire department, our wildland fire management program. This report aligns with, with everything that we are doing in our community and takes it to another level of thought on how we can solve some of the problems that we're experiencing, not just in Flagstaff, but in, in areas all over the country. And so one thing that we really based this report on is something that started in the 1970s, a previous commission that was created with, with the task of providing a report to Congress. It created a report called America Burning. And so May 4th of this year marked the 50th anniversary of the release of the America Burning Report, the National Commission on Fire Prevention and Control's comprehensive study of fire safety and prevention that revealed the tremendous scourge of fire on the nation. The America Burning Report was a watershed moment in the history of the fire service. This created the U.S. Fire Administration, the National Fire Academy, and the Federal Fire Prevention and Control Act of 1974. So creating a federal administration to support municipal and local fire departments and districts, providing guidance for things like smoke detectors that, that came out of this report. It was a, just very transformational document. And the Wildfire Mitigation and Management Commission was largely based on a similar hope and expectation that our report, created with experts providing recommendations to Congress, could create a narrative that will revitalize our national relationship with wildland fire in the way that this report really made a lot of significant changes for urban fire. So defining the crisis, this one's a fairly easy slide for us in Flagstaff. This isn't happening somewhere else, this is happening here. And unfortunately, this is happening all over the country. Earlier this year, there was wildfires making the news in Rhode Island in Wisconsin. This is a national crisis. On this map, we can just see the projected change in annual fire probability from across the country. So this crisis really is an international crisis. We had a lot of areas in this, this year getting smoke from fires in Canada. So looking at resilience to natural or unnatural fire effects is something that happens all over the globe right now. So defining the crisis, really thinking about how many communities are threatened by wildfire, between the years of 2005 and 2022, nearly 100,000 structures were destroyed by wildfire. So again, really setting the, the tone here, the need, the scale, this commission really addressed a, a national crisis. So the background, this commission was established by the bipartisan infrastructure law, and I think backing up a little bit, understanding how this commission worked is going to be really important as you read through this on kind of understanding how we got to these recommendations. So this, this background, I think, is really important. So we were tasked directly with very specific language around some recommendations, but we also had very wide sideboards to think outside the box on some needs that weren't necessarily in the statute of the commission, that as a group, we decided were very important to go after. Fifty members from very diverse groups. There's actually two reports. The first one was based on aviation, and that was submitted in February of earlier this year. It really looked into the reality that we're using second-hand air platforms. We're not using aircraft designed specifically for responding to wildfires. We're using other aircraft designed for other things that are being retrofit to respond to wildfires. And again, similar to what this report gets into, our workforce, trying to figure out, do we have the right people at the right place with the right skills to utilize these resources? And so the 50 members on this commission, we had 14 federal members from different agencies, 36 state NGO, academic, and other seats. It was nonpartisan at all. At no point did politics come into play with this. It was really incredible, the diversity of folks in the room and how we all work together. You know, one day, we're, we're on the phone calling somebody from an NGO in, in Southern California, the next day, we're talking to a rancher in Southeast Oregon. We had every bit of, of energy in the room of people who are being impacted by wildfires across this country, and all focused in a very positive way. And so workgroups were really the energy behind this process. We had 10 workgroups. I led the response coordination group and participated in landscapes and workforce. And so the report is not following these workgroups directly, but this is how we organized our work. So each workgroup would come together and create findings, and then we identified recommendations that had to be related to a finding. So the, the issues and the recommendations were tied together. It, it really was a collaborative process in the sense that every single workgroup recommendation that ended up in this report was, was a consensus-based process. So when we would go through and develop recommendations, there was a workgroup vote that you either loved it, you could live with it, or I can't live with it. And anything that receives a can't live with it, we went back and as a group went through that. And if we couldn't get to consensus, that did not make it out of the workgroup. Once that workgroup came through with a final set of recommendations, it went through the entire commission, and then once again, that entire commission got to vote. So every single one of the 148 recommendations in this report was submitted and, or approved by every single commission member. So very strong consensus through this process. Public comments were received as well. There was over 500 submissions. The individual commission members received themes and, and common messages from the staffers of the commission. We obviously couldn't go through every single one of these individually, but there was a lot of work in this final report that came from outside groups contributing through the process, and other subject matter experts that weren't necessarily appointed to the commission as a voting member, but were able to contribute their expertise through the process. So 148 consensus-based recommendations, 340 pages. I'll be honest, it's about 200 pages that are really the line-by-line narrative for each recommendation. So again, it is overwhelming. The first night that we had the, the final draft available for review, took me about three and a half hours to get through it. So it's doable. The, the themes that I really want to go through and kind of the organization here, the report itself reads as if you're walking through a timeline of before, during, and after. So Chapter 1 all the way through Chapter 7 really thinks about what we should do before a fire, what we do during a fire, and how our communities are dealing with things after a fire. So really, that, that workgroup framework is translated into this cycle of, of fire. And then the themes, fortunately, in Flagstaff, I feel like a lot of these themes are kind of just accustomed to us. This is a way of life for us. Collaboration, investing in resilience, really is something that I think we've seen tonight come up quite a bit, never mind through this report. But one definition I really want to work with you on here, enabling beneficial fire. So that is a theme throughout this report, and it's, it's a complex issue because we're talking about all these negative impacts of fire, and we're recommending a lot of these solutions that involve fire. And so beneficial fire can prevent catastrophic fire. And our term beneficial fire includes wildfires that are doing some sort of positive impact on the landscape, so a beneficial wildfire, prescribed burning, and indigenous cultural burning practices as well. And one of the selected recommendations I wanted to start with here was recognizing tribal cultural burning practices. Throughout this report, this is one of the, the narratives that I'm most proud of, where we're not saying indigenous cultural burning is going to solve the wildfire crisis that's been created over the last 150 years, but is an important part of fixing our relationship as a country with fire. There were communities that were burning and living with our landscapes in a positive way for 10,000-plus years, and that was stripped away from them. It was criminalized, it was excluded from their communities, and restoring this, this practice is going to be a really vital part of how we move forward, not because we know this is going to solve a million acres, but even if it's a small acreage, it's the right thing to do, and it's really important that we recognize this history and how we engage this practice moving forward. Supporting collaborations, again, solutions, this, this isn't a federal problem, this is a national problem, and federal agencies alone will not be able to solve this, just like we see with FWPP and For Frye. Federal agencies alone are not going to be the, the problem solvers in the room. We've got to work together as communities at every level of society. Reactive to proactive, we've got to get in front of this every time we're spending money responding to catastrophic wildfires. It's more expensive, it's diluting our capacity as a municipality, it's, it's hurting us when we're responding to these incidents rather than preventing them in the first place. So through significant investments and proactive planning, we know we can reduce these risks and these costs afterwards. And again, investing in resilience, the wildfire crisis needs to be funded, staffed, and acted upon like the national emergency that it is. To do less is to resign ourselves to tremendous cost and losses. This is again, in this report, a narrative that goes through here over and over. A lot of these solutions, we know what we need to do, but this narrative puts those solutions into action if we, if we can actually get together and implement these things. And again, enabling beneficial fire. The, the prescribed burning needs to scale up, cultural burning needs to be reintegrated into our landscapes, and wildfire manage-for-resource objectives needs to continue. Luckily, here in Region 3, Arizona, New Mexico, we're really good at, at doing beneficial wildfires. I just spent a week on a stillfire over by the Blue Ridge Ranger Station, and that was a natural ignition that was started by lightning. That management effort started to turn that into a much larger footprint, and, and it became over 10,000 acres of beneficial fire on the landscape. And so really, using all the tools in our toolbox to implement these solutions is, is going to be needed. And so I just wanted to show you guys quickly, this is what beneficial fire looks like in a ponderosa pine ecosystem. This was the stillfire over, over by the Blue Ridge Ranger Station. So again, the fire's staying on the ground, it's consuming needles and grasses and small shrubs, small trees. In some places, it may actually climb up the trees a little bit, but it's not running from tree to tree, it's just staying on the ground. And you can see a few of the people with drift torches over there on the right side putting that fire down. And so this is, this is beneficial fire right here. This is exactly what our community and our, our landscape is looking for. So when we're enabling beneficial fire, this translates into a bunch of different themes here, workforce, appropriations, a lot of different topics, but a couple of the ones I wanted to pull out here for, for recognition, recommendation number 14. Congress should instruct the agencies to develop the necessary administrative systems to allow resource ordering for prescribed fire to be as seamless as it is for wildfire response. We have a wildfire that pops off in Flagstaff, we mobilize people from potentially all over the country. We don't really do that so well for prescribed fire. So our workforce priorities and our policies are really geared toward responding. How do we transition that from reactive to proactive? So we have these mechanisms in place that allow resources to mobilize, we just need to get better at using them for prescribed fire in the way that we do for wildfire. Something catastrophic happens, we can have 1,000 people here within 48 hours, we can feed them, we can take care of their equipment, and, and just provide all kinds of resources. We need to take wild, those policies and use them for prescribed fire to scale up our abilities. And this was another big win here, number 41. Through the public health sector, we recognize that beneficial fire means smoke in the air that impacts our communities. We've got to get better at mitigating smoke impacts to our communities, even with beneficial fire. And so what we've got here is, is a very long sentence talking about how we need to work together to minimize smoke impacts to our communities, but the victory here was that first line, while enabling proactive use of beneficial fire. So we're not saying we can't do the fire and pump the brakes on what we know is, is the number one solution to prevent catastrophic fire. We need to pump the gas pedal on beneficial fire, and we need to be doing a better, better job in our community, whether it's providing HEPA filters, whether it's providing clean air hubs, whether it's getting better at being able to predict how smoke will move across our landscape through these burns. Really looking at all of these solutions has to be on the table for us. And then changing the system of land management agency performance metrics, number 147. The way we often do things on, on land management is we have a target, we have an acreage goal. Well, it's a lot easier to go out in the middle of nowhere and crank out 5,000 acres of fire than it is to go up to Observatory Mesa and do 500 acres of fire. And so we need to better recognize and reward those organizations, whether it's the Forest Service or the city, or whoever it is, that are doing the harder, smaller-scale jobs that may have a higher return on investment than just creating targets that drive people to go do the big, easy things. We need to do both. We need to do the big, easy, we need to do the small and difficult, and we need to recognize the value of doing both. And so workforce, this was obviously a topic in the commission that really comes into everything. A comprehensive, expanded, and sustainable workforce is a cornerstone of our ability. We can't do all the things we're talking about in here, whether it's working with more people to do firewise assessments of their property, mitigate smoke impacts, implement beneficial fire. We can't do this without the right workforce with the right skills. So one of the big selected recommendations here, and this is kind of connecting back to our America Burning Report from 50 years ago, that report created the fire administration. Now we need to take the fire administration and get them into the wildland world. So this recommendation, improve training and coordination between structured fire departments and wildland fire management. City of Flagstaff's been leading this for over 20 years, and when we're in the room talking to people about this, telling them where we are at, the investments the city has made, we need more areas to get to this place, and they need to do it faster than it took us to get where we are now. So really thinking about the fire administration as that federal role that supports municipal structure and EMS departments, they need to get into the wildland realm. So it's not just an urban environment anymore that they're skilled in, we've got to take them into this wildland space. So this is going to be a big recommendation. If you gave me an opportunity to list my top 10, this would definitely be in the top 10. And one of the reasons really is, is we started to look more at workforce. So these numbers are obviously estimates, but federal agencies field approximately 19,000 dedicated workforce of firefighters, approximately 24,000 private contractors. So there's already more private sector contractors out there than there are Forest Service or, or other federal agencies. But the big number here, local fire departments registered with FEMA field an estimated 1.2 million people. So those are our career, like here in Flagstaff, volunteer, or some places where they do what's called a paid-per-call. So we've got 1.2 million people out there who are tasked with responding to hazards in their community. 63% of those departments registered with FEMA are documented as having to respond to wildfires. So if we're looking at more than half of the 1.2 million-person workforce, they don't have a federal agency that's directly tasked with supporting them in wildland fire response and prescribed fire implementation. So that's the role that we need to take with the U.S. Fire Administration, is to scale up their impact, their ability to impact that 1.2 million-person workforce. And then we've got some more language in here, just about more training opportunities. We need more skills. We can't just have people skilled in putting out fires, we need some more people skilled in lighting fires, we need them working together. We have a large people, or a large group of the workforce where there are people that just do one of those two things. We need to integrate this. We can't just have a suppression workforce and a prescribed fire workforce. We've got to get all these people in the room together and really go after these, these challenges together. So we've got a couple workforce-related recommendations that I don't want to say we were passing the buck or punting the process, but I mean, over this year, we, we had a workgroup that had 15 two-hour-long meetings. 30 hours isn't long enough for a roomful of people to solve all of these problems with workforce. So we've got a couple task force recommendations in here that will continue the process. Our audience by statute was Congress. These task force, though, will help us go after some, some state and local challenges that we're running into as well. But really, key takeaways, we've got short-term, we've got long-term, we've got actionable things that we could do tomorrow, it just takes somebody to take a chance and make some decisions. We've also got policy recommendations that'll be a little bit longer of a lift, and then we've got some transformational things in here that are really going to take decades to work through the entire process. But there is no single solution. All of the 148 recommendations taken together, though, are going to make some significant change across our, our wildfire relationships. So next steps, next week, we're going to DC as commission members, and we have meetings already set up with some committees. We've already seen a few elected officials put out press releases recognizing the report is out there, but this is going to take a lot of time. We, we're in the middle of kind of the outrage, or the outreach, we're doing like a roadshow, you know, it's, I'm not asking people immediately to tell me, how are things changing? Because we just published this a month ago. It's going to take some time, we need people to take some time to read it and absorb it. We're going to have to have a lot of meetings where we talk about how these recommendations can be transitioned from a narrative into action. And so I don't expect some of these things to happen overnight, but some of the stuff, I think, is, is I think, is, is positioned to be able to happen rather quickly. So obviously, this is our federal target, but we've got a lot of other opportunities here to start implementing this stuff locally. So I know that, that was kind of quick, there's a lot in there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Neil. Questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Neil, so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, by definition, there's terms like beneficial and catastrophic. You can have catastrophic fire, you can have beneficial fire, these are diametrically opposite. I, I wanted you to just take a moment to speak about the relationship between those two in terms of carbon output. And I'll, I'll just leave it open-ended, you can answer that anyway, I might have some further questions for you, but just any thoughts on, on that side of things?
Yeah, first, I'll, I'll go to, you know, the, in the first paragraph here on page five, defining the crisis, "The nation finds itself in a paradox in which fire, there is, fire is both central to the crisis and one essential part of the solution." So it's, it's complex. High severity fire in some ecosystems is a natural part of that landscape. It's really inconvenient if there's a town right below it and rain falls on that, and so that catastrophic fire may not be as catastrophic for that landscape, but it's really catastrophic to the community below. So that's where I think a lot of these definitions of, of what's beneficial or what's catastrophic comes to us as a community to make those determinations. And what could be a natural high severity fire in a patch of the peaks that we've built flood mitigation measures into place, and then it happens and it doesn't destroy our community's well-being, well then we've got to some degree a high severity naturally occurring fire in a prepared community environment that is not as destructive to us, and that we don't have to mobilize this, this big post-fire mechanism of, of funding and staff time and, and community impacts. So fire is local, and every little fire that burns has a different impact. We could have twenty thousand acres of the pipeline fire or two thousand acres of the museum fire have similar impacts on the community. So it's, it's incredibly variable. Carbon-wise, again, we, we, we know that mitigating, mitigating carbon losses and keeping that carbon stored in big fire-resistant trees is the best thing we can do for our forests to reduce our emissions. The, the ponderosa pine forest evolved to, to store that carbon in those trees, not to have it in a whole bunch of little trees. We're also getting a lot more science that shows the bigger trees, even after ecological thinning takes place, they start growing even faster and absorbing more carbon. So really, as we, as we have in the latest update of the Carbon Neutrality Plan, again, all these things align, having a healthy fire-adapted ponderosa pine forest that keeps that carbon in those, in those trees, even though we may be putting fire into that landscape to maintain that natural fire-adapted structure and pattern, there's going to be some smoke in the air, we're still maintaining the majority of that carbon in that natural structure and pattern versus releasing it through the prescribed burns.
Thank you. So a second, but related question. You mentioned the Carbon Neutrality Plan and the synergies between what you're doing and the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We do have on our next agenda item, looking at the citizens' petition, adding new priorities to the Carbon Neutrality Plan. I just think this is maybe your opportunity to speak to that a little bit from your perspective and offer us any thoughts that you want to provide on that topic. I don't want, again, open-ended, I'm not looking for anything in particular, I just think this is your chance to sort of, let us know where you think those synergies are and where you think the gaps are, and, and if you have any opinions about the citizen petition, that would be the time to share them.
I know, we work very closely with Nicole and Jenny and the whole sustainability team. We're on the phone with them and in meetings all the time going through this, and I think we put together a great package, and I think if there's people in the community or in the city or other places that have ideas on how we can improve that, then I'm all for it. And so I'm, I'm completely open to hearing what other people think about how we can package the, the priorities and the needs. I think it's, it's got to be something, again, like this report, it's got to be more than just words on paper, it's got to help us figure out how we turn this into action and what kind of difference that's going to help us make in the community. So again, it's, these, these things change. I mean, if you look at what our FWPP priorities were in two thousand twelve when the bond passed versus where we are now, it's, it's a pretty good evolution, and, and you know, we need to facilitate evolution of, and evolve our, our challenges and our problem-solving strategies as much as possible. So totally open to having these conversations, we've met with, with Tom and his group before and had some great dialogue, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So first, I just want to just express my appreciation and acknowledge that this acknowledges the tribal cultural burning patterns, I think is so important. I mean, our, our Native American community has such great wisdom on taking care of Mother Earth and our, our forests, and so I just really appreciate that you have put that into this plan, it, it really means a lot. And I also just want to emphasize how critical it is to focus on fire management and mitigation. I've read numerous articles about California, who in a lot of ways is on the forefront of reducing their carbon emissions, and then it all goes up, no pun intended, or maybe it is, up in smoke with all their fires and their setback twenty years in their efforts. So this is really exciting. When I was in Washington DC with the group, we were acknowledged for the efforts that Flagstaff and neighboring fire agencies are on the forefront of how to manage forest and keep our carbon emissions at bay and to manage our forests. So just thank you so much, this is an exciting presentation, and I just really want to applaud you on the efforts that the, the group and the team did. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You know, the tribal part, I just, I think I could sum that up, we had a wonderful partner from the Cultural Resource Fire Management Council, I think they're called, in Northern California, Margot Robbins, and she said, "It's not just our landscape that's fire-adapted, our culture is fire-adapted." And that kind of opened a whole new space in my head of, of the importance of the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
Additional questions, council? Because I have a few. Yes?
If I may, just to comment, we're so proud of Neil's participation on this, I'm going to call it a historical commission. The reference he made earlier, America Burning, for people of my generation when we joined the fire service, we're beginning to implement those measures. Because of that report, firefighter safety improved, our, our industry improved with respect to technical leadership training, the nation's fire codes, fire-resistant materials began to be required because of fire deaths in that period of time in urban centers and in rural areas was unacceptable. And so that report was really a landmark, and I've tried to impress upon Neil that you're doing the next version of America Burning with this report, and so we'll provide you this, and I'm just adding a little perspective, this is historic, because this is what the fire problem looks like now. And there's a lot of great work that went into it, and I just wanted to kind of plant, you know, forgive me for geeking out on the historical elements of this for just a moment, but it is significant, Neil's represented this community exceptionally well in his participation, and so we're very proud of that, and we're really excited to be a part of this history in the making, so thanks for acknowledging that.
Thank you. And I don't know whether this question is for you, Chief, or for you, Neil. How many of the Flagstaff Fire Department firefighters are trained for wildland fire? Do they all train for wildland fire?
Every single one. So if we look at what we call the Greater Flagstaff Region, so we've got Summit Flagstaff, Highlands, Ponderosa, Pinewood, everybody goes through a minimal wildland firefighter training, so it's what we would call a Type Two Wildland Firefighter Course, which is fairly unique, not every area goes through that sort of commitment. And, and not only do we make sure that everybody gets the minimum training, when we look across the Greater Flagstaff Region, the number of higher qualified folks that we have that are practicing with incident management teams, it's, it's really incredible the commitment that kind of from the ground up are folks in the Greater Flagstaff Region have made through the fire service.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to take, oh, wait a minute, is this for eleven B? Yes, okay, I'm going to take some public comment. Laura Kessler.
Hi, my name is Laura, and you may remember me, I've been flood-impacted two different times, two different fires, two different locations, Mead Lane and Schultz Fire out in Timberline, twelve, thirteen years ago. So this is a topic that's really near and dear to my, to my heart and my life, and I just want to say thank you so much for listening to the fire experts here in town, and I've met with Neil, I think, once, and I've, being a member of Flagstaff first, I've really thrown myself into learning about forest fires and forest health, and it's so important, it's such a top priority for our community inside town and outside of town. But I do have a couple of questions here, and, and back to top priorities, I think, number one, we need to protect town, and we need to restore town, too. I hope in the near future, we can begin to restore the town of the damages that have been going on outside of town and in town. But my questions are both to Neil and to the city council, and number one, this is kind of scattered, because I just kind of came, came up with these questions while listening to Neil, but I'd like to know, how can we improve and accelerate forest thinning? Because I know how important that is from my discussions and, and with, with fire personnel. It's so important to thin the forest, and it's going to take, I found out, decades, it could take up to twenty years. I'd like to know, how can the city help them accelerate and to improve the forest thinning? And the more trees that are out there, the more water is being sucked up into trees that we really don't want into the fuel, and it, that makes the, the forest drier in itself. Too many trees make the forest drier. That's, that's such an important thing that I had learned. Number two, biomass plants can really speed up the process of thinning and making our, our forests safer and our towns safer. I'd like to know, how can the city support biomass plants? There's a small one in Williams, and there's also a larger one in Snowflake, but it's not economically viable to truck trees here, tell me if I'm wrong, to Snowflake for, for the biomass processing there. Also, I'd like to know, how can the city significantly support thinning in order to protect the residents and, and end the flooding, protect us from flooding? And I'd also like to know, how can you make the implementation of his recommendations a top priority in order to protect us? And that's about all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you so much. Neil, Chief, you want to take a stab at these questions?
Thank you for the wonderful questions. You know, one of the challenges we run into is a lot of the timber industry and the, the utilization of the material is all based on private sector business models. Fire management is very often public sector employees, and so we can mobilize a lot of the public sector folks to go do something. The, the lessons we've learned across our landscape here in Northern Arizona about private sector utilization models are, you know, we could write a pretty good book on that, and it's challenging. I think we've seen ebbs and flows, which is kind of natural with a lot of, of business models, but I think one of the successful things that we've been able to overcome in the last few years here was the, the ForFry NEPA in the early days of the FWPP NEPA. If we don't have that public planning process completed, we can't even begin to offer anything to private sector industry. So in Arizona, we have over a million acres of NEPA-approved ecological thinning that needs to occur. So what we're moving into now are some of the contracting challenges. For a couple times, the, the Forest Service has gone through a process to try to award a large, long-term contract. We did that once, and they were supposed to cut three hundred thousand acres over ten years, they cut about thirty thousand acres over ten years. So we're struggling to figure it out, where we used to think, oh, we'll just award a giant contract and that'll cover somebody's financial risk, that wasn't enough. And so what we're trying to figure out a lot more now is, is we still have a, a good amount of local players doing smaller-scale things, how can we make sure they stay capable and scale up? So where we, a few years ago, we're cutting ten thousand acres a year statewide, now we're at about fifteen to seventeen thousand acres a year. We want to be at forty to fifty thousand, so we're not anywhere near where we want to be at that target, but we certainly don't want to work backwards. And that's one of the realities that we're, we're struggling with, with such a big winter from last year, some industries really had a, a tough time kind of recovering from being stuck out of the woods for so long. The biomass plant in Snowflake is a huge, important player in our work, and they're struggling to maintain a supply. So this time of year, industry loves to start doing what they call build a winter deck or a winter supply. So if they get kicked out of the woods because of snowpack, they have a big supply to keep that mill or that facility working over the winter. Snowflake, Novo Bio Power, Brad Worsley, we just had another meeting with some folks today to review some challenges, he's got about a two-day supply at his yard right now. So we're trying to figure out how, how can we optimize moving some material from key areas so we don't burn this in the woods and create smoke impacts to our community, but get it to Snowflake where they burn it more efficiently and we actually get some byproducts out of it. We're looking at the need to pay truckloads to get to them, we have a shortage of truckers. So it's, it's not just throw money at a problem sometimes, it's a lot more complicated than that. So luckily, we've got a lot of smart folks, we've got folks at the Ecological Restoration Institute working on a lot of workforce training programs, we've got NGOs in the community supporting this with a lot of really good science, but it's challenging. You know, we thought we were trending in the right direction, and suddenly a big winner slows us down. And so I don't have answers to everything, other than this community's been working harder at this in a collaborative way than a lot of folks have for a long time. And so the good news is, we have that NEPA on the ground, we have these acres available, we have Forest Service that have demonstrated the ability to award acres, but we struggle sometimes to have really good information about exactly what is on each acre that needs to get removed. So we've got folks working on the better science of our inventory of what we're pulling out of the woods and better monitoring, but, but we need to scale it up. So you know, it's, it's challenging for sure, I don't have all the answers, but working with our industry partners and trying to identify their needs is, is a big part of what we're doing on a daily basis.
Thank you. And can I put you on the spot? So the city has prioritized this. What more can we be doing? What would be helpful from the city council, city leadership? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, and, and what does additional support look like? Does it look like another bond like the city did for FWPP, or what's it look like?
I can, let me try to address a couple of those. One is, this is a very federal process, we were invited to participate in a federal process, and so the good news is, we were able to influence that through Neil's participation and a lot of really smart people who are involved in that. I'm super excited, and part of the discussion he just discussed is, there's a recognition now that the nation's wildland firefighters are your firefighters, the local firefighters. And so the idea that we might get better at programming, training, and, and outreach to get to those firefighters through the U.S. Fire Administration is a big deal, and we're very supportive of that. The measures that are identified in this program that, in addition to that, we need, we need to exert our influence on the federal system, and by that I mean your influence on the federal system through our lobbying efforts and through our, our work with the congressional delegation, that this is a priority, this is well-thought-out, and we support these recommendations. So that's one response, is make sure our folks in Washington know this is important to us, and we're agreeing with the strategy that's been put forth. And hopefully, when you get a chance to read all seven hundred pages of it, or whatever that looks like, that you'll come away with, yeah, we, we should get behind this. With respect to the previous question, and then the question about, you know, funding sources and so forth, I'll just say that a couple of things come to light, is there's a lot of work that's coming down the pipeline, and it's because the city already has been very much investing in its safety. It's just unheard of that a community would sell ten million dollars in bonds to do work on federal lands to protect themselves. That also has been leveraged. That also has been leveraged twice its value so far in the federal government in recognizing that the community of Flagstaff is willing to do that. They have pushed more and more funds to this collaborative effort and we've done a lot of work. With respect to how long, and we always try to remind folks, it's a process, it's, there's no stopping. If we want to protect this beautiful environment and this place that we all like to call home, this work can't, you know, cross the finish line. You know, it's a biological process and we're going to, we're gonna need to commit to that as a core tenet of our ongoing sustainability. And that's our situation, we don't get to stop. The good news is, and I'll let Neil speak to this, but a great deal of funding currently is coming to our area and is being programmed to continue the implementation of the FWPP and I'll let the smart guy tell you a little bit more about that.
It's, just to give you an example, even if, let's say, it costs us $500 extra to subsidize a truck that has been filled with wood chips from a project right by the airport to get to the power plant over in Snowflake. Operationally, we don't always know if there's truckers available to do that, or the logger who can mobilize to do that said, I can run two trucks a day. Well, operationally, you've got to run that grinder to load that truck with that material and then the grinder operator can't just sit there and wait three hours for the next truck to come. So a lot of our problems aren't things that can be solved just by saying, well, what do you need financially to make that happen? So a lot of this is trying to find efficiencies, there's a lot of lobbying that we can do. We need a very robust Coquenino National Forest Fire Shop and Timber Shop, so advocating for these recommendations at that federal level and doing that lobbying work is very important and it's been incredibly successful. The work that the city and the county have been doing for decades on this, this is why we're in a position now where, to some degree, the NEPA and federal funding is not always our bottleneck. In a lot of places, that is their bottleneck and they haven't got through that yet. So it's, it's not something where we can say, we need more dollars to put into projects because to some degree, between the infrastructure bill, the FWPP bond, money that the Forest Service committed before all of that, every priority we have within FWPP has a money trail that we can walk back and point to that's about as reliable as you can get when we're talking about federal budgets that on an annual basis are quite fluid. So it's not that, at this point in time, we need a project that I can show you that isn't funded. We have those dotted lines to a funding source. It's just figuring out that nut to crack about, how can we get the private sector to implement these thinning projects more effectively? And, you know, other than, I mean, some vision of saying, well, what if the Forest Service built a sawmill? I mean, well, how are they then going to compete? What if other sawmills are now not being subsidized? So that's the difficulty, you know, of really being in this private sector environment where we really are, and what's been most successful for us is, how do we enable the private sector and not compete with the private sector?
Thank you. And I know that this has been a priority for the city for years and years and years and it's still part of our legislative priorities. And when we were recently, well, I guess it was quite a while ago, in DC that we lobbied for this. And it's because of your work that when we met with the USDA, that they were just gushing about the work that you all have been doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Do I? No? Just one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be sure to, again, we're gonna get you copies of the report, we just didn't have them printed yet.
Can I just add one thing, Mayor? You know, the question was directed to city council too. And obviously, we get a lot of time up here to talk about things and we can talk more about this in our next discussion as well. I just want to put a finer point on my belief that our previous council, this council, and I would hope the next council, is very excited about biomass and supporting biomass as much as we can and trying to figure out some of those operational gaps and the other hiccups that we've been experiencing long-term on how to do that. I've been involved in some internal conversations around some innovative strategies. NEU is working hard on this topic, I think they're a wonderful partner. We have some other partners in the community that I don't want to jump the gun on right now by talking about publicly, but lots of conversations happening around the biomass problem and how to solve it and how to scale that up as much as possible. I know the mayor's very excited about biomass as well. Everyone on council is very supportive of it. So to the extent that there are solutions available, we will pursue those aggressively and we will all be very excited to see some new movement in that sphere.
Well, last plug, the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership over the last year has created a subgroup within that nonprofit that's specifically targeting biomass utilization options.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we are moving down to Agenda Item 12A, Future Agenda Item Request, a citizen's petition titled "Add New Priorities to the Carbon Neutrality Plan." Council, we've been given a handout and I have a public comment. And so, I would like to begin this with public comment. So, Mr. Pearson, please.
I'm Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Aslan, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today about the Flagstaff First Petition requesting that wildfire, flooding, and drought be added as a top priority to the Carbon Neutrality Plan. I'll say parenthetically, Neil's presentation couldn't be a better segue for me. And it was excellent and covered a lot of the things that we are in favor of. Over the last decade, Flagstaff has endured five major wildfires, followed by destructive flooding in the east, west, and center of the city. The threat of wildfire and flooding cannot remain a fixture in Flagstaff. It is essential for the safety and security of Flagstaff residents that permanent solutions be found and implemented. Our petition addresses wildfire, flooding, and drought as a single priority because these events are not independent issues, but part of a complex, interactive system. Treating them as a single high priority will promote interdepartmental cooperation and coordination. We are asking for this top priority status because priority-based budgeting is Flagstaff's mechanism for implementing programs and allocating resources. The first step in finding permanent solutions, ending the scourge of wildfire, flooding, and drought, is making them a top priority in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Let me be clear, we are not asking for something new. Rather, we are seeking historic priorities be restored. After conducting a comprehensive vulnerability assessment in 2018, you approved the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. That plan placed wildfire, flooding, and drought front and center as the greatest environmental threat to the people of Flagstaff. As we know, this assessment has proved to be tragically true. Finally, ending the threat of wildfire is the single most significant action Flagstaff can take to reduce CO2 in the atmosphere. A vibrant, thriving forest pulls tons of CO2 out of the atmosphere and conversely, a wildfire releases megatons of CO2 into the atmosphere. Preventing, detecting, and suppressing these catastrophic fires must be achieved. For the safety and security of all Flagstaff residents, as well as those living in the greater Flagstaff area, I urge you to place wildfire, flooding, and drought on the agenda so it can become a top priority program in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, what are your thoughts? Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how much we're allowed to engage in comment or questions on this, but I'm wondering if Jenny is still here? And Jenny, while you come down, I'll give you a moment to think about the question is just, in what ways are these things addressed within the Carbon Neutrality Plan? And what would the work be to expand it to include this as a distinct subject?
Sure, thank you so much for the question. Jenny Nieman, Climate Action Section Director. I'm actually acting for Nicole tonight, our Sustainability Division Director, so you've got me. So thank you, Councilmember House. So, healthy forests and open spaces are a target area of our current Carbon Neutrality Plan. That was also a target area of our 2018 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. When we revised the Carbon Neutrality Plan in 2022, we essentially combined those two plans together. This was actually done due to a lot of internal conversation, particularly with my colleagues in fire, of the need to have really just one climate plan that talked about carbon neutrality, as well as all of the resilience aspects of the first climate plan. So that was healthy forests and open spaces, economic vitality and prosperity, things like recreation and how we think about recreation. So that 2022 Carbon Neutrality Plan now has healthy forests and open spaces as one of 15 target areas. There's a lot in that climate plan, but it is one of 15 target areas. We also have a section on water security as well, which obviously has relationships there, as well as community resilience. Of course.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Jenny, I have a question for you. How I understand this petition is that the citizens are wanting to elevate the focus of these areas to be listed as a top priority instead of just in the general body of the plan. Can you speak on that? What does that change as far as how we focus our efforts on our carbon neutrality goals and prioritizing where we put our focus?
Sure. So, the Carbon Neutrality Plan, as I just mentioned, is large, it covers a lot of things, right? Everything from electric mobility to the health of our forests. It has three main goals, though. And so, those goals, you all have heard me up here, we put them on the page every time, are reducing emissions, are community resilience, and building community equity. And so, that might be one way that council chooses to focus it. But we have essentially those three goals and then we have kind of four main organizing areas of action that those 15 target areas are underneath. That is essentially our neighborhoods, our communities, so housing and recreation and resilience are under there. We have energy sources, because so much in climate action falls under that. We have consumption. And then we have commitments to our community. And so, those might be areas that council wants to look at, that's kind of our organizing framework, if that would be helpful. The 15 target areas are under that. And I can pull this up as a slide, just give me one second. Sorry, I'm just gonna pull up the website because I think it probably...
You're brave to have your search history just out there.
Not my computer, but, so, here are, let's see, the best way to do this. If you'd like to think about it as sort of these four areas, so neighborhoods, energy, consumption, and commitments, this is how we have sort of organized the plan. Does that answer the question, Councilmember Matthews?
Not really, and I'm at a disadvantage because I'm remote and don't have access to looking it up myself. But I guess what it comes down to is, how I understood the petition to be is, again, when we have top priorities in our Carbon Neutrality Plan, it identifies and highlights where to prioritize our investment. And, you know, from what I hear from these constituents is that they want the fire flood mitigation and adaptation to be in that section that prioritizes our efforts to focus on that, because that is our biggest risk and our biggest ability to mitigate the impacts of fire and flooding and to put it to where we can prioritize our funds appropriately. And so, however, that needs to lay out there. And how I understand this, this is just a conversation to bring this fair item to an agenda item and so maybe that's a better platform to discuss this more in detail. I'm, for one, am supportive of this fair item moving forward to an agenda item and maybe that's the proper environment to then get down into the weeds on how it's structured.
All right, counsel, are there additional council members? Who are Councilmember Harris and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm not really sure who this question is directed to, but Flagstaff First or Jenny, whoever thinks they can answer this question. Have the two groups had a conversation? Have we talked to the group that's bringing the petition? Because I know you know about it. So, have they had a conversation, have we had a conversation?
Yes, the Sustainability Division has met with Flagstaff First many times. They welcomed us to one of their meetings a couple months ago and we've had many, many, multiple, I should say, individual meetings with various members of that group. But feel free, Tom, or anyone else to speak to that, as you wish as well. I don't...
Okay, so then my question goes to Flagstaff First. So in the many, many meetings that you've had, and somebody can stop me if this is an inappropriate question, so the many, many meetings that you've had with sustainability, was there any resolution? Did they satisfy your question or your concerns regarding the plan?
Yeah, I had two specific meetings with Nicole about this, in addition to the group coming to our meeting, which I want to thank you again. That was excellent and they did a super job and were well received by our group. We had an excellent dialogue. So, but in the meetings I've had with Nicole, I don't want to speak for her, but my impression of our discussion was that she was fully supportive of all of the points that we had to make. And my point was about raising the level to one of the top priorities so that for the budgeting purposes and for just raising the level of awareness, it would be an effective mechanism to do that. And she did not object to that. Again, I hate to, I don't want to speak for her, but we seemed to be in complete agreement about that. She could not, I believe, she could not say, I'm in favor of that, because that's, you know, up to you. But we had a good dialogue, I think there was a consensus that it would be a useful tool to increase the ability of city council and the administrative groups, the different departments and so forth, to work together on that issue.
Okay, so you didn't feel as though you had any pushback from sustainability on this?
I can say that without reservation. We had no pushback.
And they seem to be in agreement with your concerns or addressing it?
Right.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I want to start off by thanking you, Mr. Tom Pearson, and your group for bringing this conversation forward, for getting engaged in the public. I want to thank you in particular for the lengthy dialogues that we've been through and for keeping it short this evening. We've been hearing from each other for a while now. And... And I just want to acknowledge the folks that are still in the room with us. I assume most of you are with Flagstaff Community First. And it's very gracious of you to not all pull out public speaking cards and take another 45 minutes to discuss the points that you've made, that I think we've all heard over the last several months. I also want to acknowledge that I think you collected somewhere on the order of 400 signatures in order to get this petition on the ballot. I find that very impressive. That's not easy to do. I would say, I think, asking people to get excited about protecting our forests and our community from drought and flooding is low-hanging fruit. I think we can all agree that those are top priorities. And when we feel that they're not being addressed, we're going to pounce on the opportunity to have those ideas and those concerns championed. So, I just want to acknowledge the public part of that whole process. Last week, I had a chance to speak publicly about petitions, and one of the words I used for a petition is sacred. And I really do believe that. I'm Catholic, so I kind of consider the whole thing sacramental and a bit of a covenant between the public and the elected leaders that are elected to represent ideas. I'm glad the petition process is built into our charter and to our guiding documents. I'm glad that the public has a route to come directly to council to ask for any concern to be addressed. Ultimately, we have to wrestle with whether or not to move those things forward, and there's lots of things to consider. One of them is staff time and resources, which equates to taxpayer dollars. Another one is just the idea of how many cooks do we want in a kitchen at the same time? And the context and history of a process that has been formed. And those things all come into play. With all of that said, I think I will go ahead and just be fairly transparent about it. I'm a no on moving this forward. And while I'm just one voice on council, I would urge the rest of council to consider tapping the brakes on this a little bit, too. And there's a couple of reasons. The primary reason is I don't think that the petition process is the right vehicle for addressing these concerns. And I see that our city staff and our city apparatus is doing a good job of engaging the concerns that you're coming forward with and communicating with you directly and frequently. And I see that process continuing into the future, and I see these very legitimate concerns being addressed through more appropriate channels, actually. So, I don't want it to be felt like I'm dismissing the ideas behind here. It's a process question for me, and I think that we have other avenues for that process to play out. I also worry about, you know, just being a good steward of the petition process and many other aspects of government and management and how those things are handled. I don't want to see petitions become the default way that citizens try to play city manager. And maybe that's a bit of a crass way of putting it, but I think at the end of the day, functionally, that's what we end up with, is some prescriptive ideas around how to manage specific parts of our government. And I don't know that that's necessary. It could always become necessary in certain cases, and so that process remains an open conduit. But in this case, I just want to go back to some of the things that have been said already this evening by Neil, but by others up here. You know, the City of Flagstaff has been leading on the wildland fire realm for over 20 years, not just engaged in this process, not just thinking about it, not just struggling with it, but leading nationally on how to address these issues. We have been on the forefront of how to tackle these things in the most innovative and appropriate ways with the limited funding that we have. And the leadership that this community is showing around the country is quite obvious. I don't know that we're missing this element in terms of our city apparatus, that we need to identify the carbon neutrality plan as something that's deficient on what is clearly and what has clearly been for 20 years, a very big priority for the City of Flagstaff and for the residents of Flagstaff. It was mentioned by our chief that it's unheard of, that we would tax ourselves to manage federal land in the absence of the feds coming forward themselves to help us out. That just points to the culture and the attitude that we have as a community around tackling wildfire, around forest health, around flooding, drought, and all those mitigation efforts. I think we're there. I think this is one of the biggest priorities that the City of Flagstaff has. And so, it doesn't need to be injected into an aspect or a program or a long-term and evolving platform for how do we address some other things that we also need to address. Replacing the carbon neutrality plan with, or adding this emphasis to the carbon neutrality plan feels redundant and repetitive to me. And so, for those reasons, I just, I think that we're risking opening the hood of a vehicle and tinkering with some fine-tuned things that are going on, when it's really not necessary or it's really not necessary at this time. And again, I'll just finish by sort of getting repetitive about this. I think we're already there. I think the City of Flagstaff is not only prioritizing wildfire, flooding, and drought, but leading the nation in how we address and manage those things. And one other thing I'll add is just, you know, I worry about the unfunded mandate component or aspect of this. We are talking about things that we already need massive federal help with and are left on not being able to find those resources as we ask for them. The things we're doing in Flagstaff to reduce our carbon footprint through our facilities and through our best practices are things that we have a handle on in terms of our own purse strings. And these larger issues, which we're already at the forefront of and doing a really good job of showing leadership on and prioritizing as much as we can, are already in a separate lane and given much more consideration. So, I'm starting to ramble at this point. I might come back and speak more if I'm trying to come up with a lost thought. But thank you very much, and I urge our council to let this one go and let there be the follow-up that's necessary organically and through the process that we have, to engage this concerned community group on these topics and to incorporate as much as we can, and as much as other groups have incorporated components of what's a part of the carbon neutrality plan now, as it evolves forward. But I don't think that the petition process is the appropriate mechanism for these prescriptive suggestions.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Aslan, our Vice Mayor, said about a lot of this we're already doing, et cetera. I think if this moves forward, I don't anticipate a complete change of our carbon neutrality plan. I just see it as probably a minor tweak. So, that said, I will support moving this forward for a brief discussion to see how we can integrate these important things into the existing plan, not to change it significantly, but to just make sure that it's already in there and covered. A brief discussion will be all we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been torn on this one for a while, admittedly, because I think I understand what the Flagstaff First petition is aiming for. I am just not entirely sure that it's not already present within the carbon neutrality plan. And I had just some concerns about the representation of how the priorities are focused within the plan now. From my reading of it, and I think I'm looking at the updated plan on page seven, where it has the same page that's shown there, actually. In terms of the different areas and focus areas, healthy forests and open spaces is under the priority of commitments. So, I feel as though it's there. I think what the petition is asking for is for it to be elevated. And I think what the conversation that I'm interested in seeing move forward is not necessarily in alignment with the petition, but more in looking at the connections between the plan that we were just presented with in terms of fire adaptivity and wildland fire and all of the work that Mr. Chapman did on that plan, and how that relates to and partners with the carbon neutrality plan as it's presented now. So, that's a conversation that I'm interested in having and seeing us move forward, but not necessarily moving forward this petition. And I hope that makes sense and is understood by the group, that I see the focus that you're bringing to this. But that's the direction that I think I'd like to see us move in on it.
Thank you. And I'm going to allow another public commenter, but before that, I want to ask Jenny, what is the strategy or timeline for keeping the carbon neutrality plan fresh and addressing our current realities? For instance, well, just, I'll ask that question.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Daggett. So, the carbon neutrality plan, we had envisioned that this would be an evolving plan. We talk a lot about it in the approach section of the plan. Technology, as we talked about, electric vehicle, right? That technology sourcing changes, you know, monthly, right? Our forests are changing. You know, there is so much change in this field, whether it's from a current conditions on the ground standpoint, housing, for instance, or a technology and opportunities to solve problems and federal funding. For that reason, the carbon neutrality plan isn't, you know, a plan that says, "This is exactly what we will do every single year," right? It really truly lays out, these are the 15 areas or four kind of broad areas that we're going to focus on, and these are our three goals, right? And so, it is not a play-by-play sort of, you know, playbook in terms of that. And so, we built in a lot of flexibility. That said, we did open the opportunity for it to be revised every year, if needed. The revisions we did last year were to sort of add in the adaptation elements of that plan. So, again, healthy forests and open spaces, water security, to bring them forward. And so, that's all in the 2022 version. We also added in our housing plan into that plan, right? And so, that was kind of the additional element, because things on the ground had changed. Our policy outlook had changed because we had adopted the housing plan. So, there's a lot of flexibility within it, right? You know, council sets our budget and sets our priorities, right? And so, we follow that as we achieve the goals of the carbon neutrality plan. So, I would say that our annual budget process, right, is where we really see how things change, because we hear from you about what's important to you, right? And so, I think that that is probably the biggest way, right, that we adjust our implementation. But we can change it as needed.
So, what would be the process for adding additional language that just more explicitly states that these are priorities?
So, you know, the question of priorities is one that I would look to council's guidance. We don't raise any of these above any other ones, right? So, we have these four overarching areas and 15 target areas. We do not say this is our priority over other ones. Again, we have our three goals. And so, we don't necessarily have that kind of middle ground. We would kind of need to go back and look at it and revise the carbon neutrality plan. I think last time, it took much longer, because again, we were combining our two prior plans. But, you know, we are not doing an annual revision this year. And so, we would look for that to be a 2024 annual revision, if that was council's guidance.
Thank you, of course. All right. Laura Kessler.
Thank you for putting up with me. I really don't like speaking. I really don't like it, but this is so important to me that, I mean, I just can't imagine dismissing something this important as the protection of our residents and our property to a technicality of process. I mean, that's just insulting to a flood-impacted victim. You know, this is so important, I implore all of you to please consider the protection of us, of these three goals, which gets a lot of funding. Please put protection in one of the, just add protection. We're not taking anything away. Just add the protection and make it four goals instead of three, please. This process, the Sustainability Department, has not been efficient, because we got flooded. We still have sandbags all over town. It's not efficient. We need more efficiency, please, with protection. You know, what if this had been in there originally? Would we be as bad off as we are now? Maybe not. There's a pretty good chance we would be better off now if this had been considered in the original sustainability. This is not sustainable, the way we're living right now. You know, there's unfunded projects right now, still, the storm drains, and I know it's slated to come, finally, but that was 10 years ago. If this stuff were a priority, that would be protection, even though you didn't see fires in the future. We were still getting flooded, my neighbors in that neighborhood. We knew it was a flood problem, but those projects were not funded. Priorities. I strongly urge you to add this to the top three goals. And maybe there's some unforeseen disasters in the future that we don't even know about. Maybe we need to start focusing on immediate protections. Right now, this is all focusing on things that does not immediately impact our safety. I just can't believe that this would be dismissed on technicalities. So, please, take this into consideration. I think it's shortsighted not to put us in to the three, or I'll say the four, goals that we asked for. And please focus more on these unfunded projects as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right. Councilmember Harris.
You know, every week, we come and we listen to the community, one issue over another, and it's really difficult to try and prioritize, this is more important than that. And so, I think that all of us up here really do feel, when folks are talking to us, I think we are able to put ourselves in those spaces, at least I know I am, and my compassion for any of our community who are suffering in any way, whatever that is, I think weighs heavy on my heart. And that's why I asked the question, did you get any pushback from sustainability on what they were asking, or what you were asking? And the answer was no. Am I correct? Okay. And so, they are agreeing to some extent with what people are saying? So, explain, talk to me about that. And then, I'm going to have another comment, depending on what you say to me, so.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. And feel free to ask more questions. This is a policy decision by council, so I am, we are not weighing in on if this is, should be there or not. Again, we don't have priorities in the Again, we don't have priorities in the climate plan, in the carbon neutrality plan beyond our three goals and these 15 areas, and so that is up to council, right? And so we are, we're not, I am so excited and truly grateful for the conversations that we have had with Flagstaff First. I learn a lot every time. I know Nicole's met with Tom, I've met with my friend Phil over there, and they have been really good conversations, and we have loved having those conversations. So they are incredibly positive conversations, and I think all sides learn a lot. We are not going to weigh in on what is council's decision.
And so I guess, maybe I wasn't making myself clear, not asking you to make a decision for us. What I'm asking is that what Flagstaff First is telling you, does that make sense in the plan, the way it looks now? Do you see that it's represented in there? Do you feel that what they're saying is unrealistic? And I know that's putting you on the spot. Professionally, I'm asking for your professional opinion. Is that represented in our plan? Are their concerns addressed in that plan? Keeping this plan, will that address their concern? So that's what I'm asking you for. I'm not asking you to tell us what to do, so.
Of course. Yeah. So the forest, health, fires, flooding, and drought are addressed and discussed in this plan. This plan, however, is in some ways additive to our work over many decades, right, on forest health, on flooding, right? The Sustainability Office does not work on flood mitigation and prevention, right? The carbon neutrality plan truly is one lens to look at flooding and forest and drought, but this city, along with our regional partners, have been working on those issues far before the carbon neutrality plan came. And so we talk about those things because it is related to our work, it is related to the changing climate, but I consider my job to amplify and support my colleagues in fire and in water services, right? And the carbon neutrality plan supports their work, but it is not the totality of their work, obviously, right? We don't discuss flooding response plans, right? We don't discuss kind of meeting those emergency needs because those things have been and are handled by other divisions within the city. Is that helpful?
Yes, that's helpful. And so then it seems to me that there are still some conversations that need to happen because evidently Flagstaff First isn't seeing their concerns or needs met in this plan, right? That's what, so there still needs to be some conversations that are had because if it's in this, if it's in our plan, then somehow we're not, we're not seeing it.
Sure.
Right?
Sure.
So there still needs to be some conversation. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to reason this, you know, out.
Absolutely.
And I know that we have a limited amount of resources, trust me. You know, I was a single parent in grad school with a 15-month-old. I know what that looks like, so you do, you know. I rob Peter to pay Paul a lot. And so I understand that our resources are not finite, that there are some limits to it, and I know that your time is valuable, and we pay for your time, all of us pay for it. But I think that having some conversations and maybe even bringing in the plan that we just, I'm sorry.
The wildland fire.
Wildland fire, yes. Maybe having, maybe the three groups might need to meet and just kind of talk a little bit to see where that might be, because I think the more we talk to each other, the more we're going to understand what we don't understand. And so, yes, it's going to cost you some time, it's going to cost us some money, and I don't know where council is going on this, but I would really like for us to have a little bit broader conversation. If nothing else, it's going to answer their questions. And mine, too. So, thank you, of course.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. So I appreciate everyone's comments and conversation tonight. This has been a tough one for me as well. But at the end of the day, I do feel torn. I want to be good stewards of our money and our budget for the city, but I do think there is a conversation that needs to be had, and I understand, I think, what they're asking for, and it hopefully wouldn't be a huge addition to the CNP, but I think including it somewhere and making it more upfront and center might be worthwhile because this really is a priority. So I appreciate that you have had a lot of conversations and sustainability and that you all are talking, but I think maybe bringing council into that a little bit and seeing where we can refine the CNP and get this in there, or maybe we don't at the end of the day, but having the conversation. So I am for moving this forward. Thank you.
All right. We have three. And Councilmember House, I wasn't sure whether you were saying that you want to have a conversation about adding wildfire, flooding, and drought to the current priorities listed in the carbon neutrality plan, or you were interested in having a general discussion about how to better reflect these priorities in the plan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little torn on even how to answer that, so I, I think if we're moving forward on this, let me just state, my answer was that I don't know that the conversation that's being asked for in this petition is the conversation that we are really trying to have. I believe that wildfire, flooding, and drought are huge priorities for us, but with the carbon neutrality plan's focus on specifically sustainability efforts, I think we ultimately wind up limiting that conversation by emphasizing it within this plan that is focused on that sustainability aspect and not specifically on the wildfire, flooding, and drought. So that's why I am, I'm not in favor of the petition. What I was asking for was further conversation on how to further the partnership between fire and the CNP to make sure that it's a broader partnership across those two areas, understanding that it might not be a strengthened conversation by even highlighting it more within the CNP, and I hope that makes sense.
I believe what I'm hearing you say and what I'm hearing Councilmember Harris say is kind of the same thing, that they want to see additional conversations. So do we have three council members who want to have a more in-depth discussion about adding these items to the carbon neutrality plan as priorities? I heard Councilmember McCarthy and Councilmember Matthews.
Can we pull up the language on the petition?
Yes, and actually, we have Councilmember Sweet as well, so we've got it, and we can have a, bring this forward for a discussion. Thanks, council. Thank you, Jenny.
Oh, Councilmember McCarthy.
Yeah, I do support moving this forward, but as I said in my comments, I don't see this as a major revolution, a major rewrite in the document. I see it as just, hey, let's review it and make sure we got this covered. Basically, the climate mitigation has got, well, the carbon neutrality has got two parts, reducing carbon emissions and then adapting to the climate change that we are seeing. And this comes into the second part of that. And so, you know, it's, I'm not asking for a major rewrite, I'm just asking for, okay, can we integrate this? So I'll just leave that comment out there so staff doesn't put more time into this than is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Just real quick, I would like to echo that as well. I don't think this is a major revision. I think it's hopefully not going to take a lot of time, and thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for bringing that up.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So I'm wondering if we can just bring up the language of the petition, because what we're voting on is what is in the language of the petition. And my recollection is that the petition is very prescriptive on rewriting the carbon neutrality plan to include wildfire, flood, and drought as a major component of the carbon neutrality plan.
Well, that would be the discussion that we have when this is, when this is brought forward by council to discuss, is whether we want to have these listed as priorities in the carbon neutrality plan. I'm hearing that there's more of a consideration of having additional, I almost said, additional discussions about additional discussions, having discussions about how we make sure that these priorities are reflected clearly where no one has to guess, and having a conversation with fire, sustainability, and so this will come back to council, and council will decide whether this is some kind of direction that we want to give or whether we just want to have a broader discussion about how these priorities are reflected.
Hey, Mayor. Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate the comments from both you, Mayor, and the Vice Mayor. What is on the agenda tonight is simply for the council to determine if there are three that want to move forward to discuss how it's written in the petition. If at the work session it turns into something else and a different, you know, request is made of the city manager through the streamlining of fair processes and so on, if it turned into something else, you could do that at that point, but tonight, it's simply, do you want to move forward with what's in the petition here, and are there three council members willing to move that forward?
Thank you, Sterling. Okay. We have it. Thank you. And we're going to move down to public participation. I don't see any online public participation or in person, so we will move down to informational items, two from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. Councilmember Matthews, are you still with us?
Mayor, I believe she had to step off.
Okay. Councilmember McCarthy.
I don't have anything tonight, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
I debated on if I was going to mention this, but I am because hopefully it's an inspiration for everybody. I am traveling to Tempe this weekend and doing my first half Ironman, and it's something I never in a million years thought I'd be doing, but here I am, and it's been months of training, and I just want to thank everyone who has supported me along this journey, and I'll let you know how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember House.
Nothing for me, but best of luck to you, Councilmember Sweet.
Councilmember Harris.
In view of the hour, and all of us have had a long, long day, I'm going to save my comments until next week. No, I won't be here next week, so it'll be the next time. I'll do it next time.
Vice Mayor.
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I have a couple of things. There was a great town hall, Arizona Town Hall, on equity, and I was lucky enough to sit at the table with Councilmember Harris, and I was glad to have that opportunity. I visited Dispatch, took some cupcakes, and they gave me a tour and really spent some time talking to me about what they do, and they invited the entire council to come, so anytime you want to go, Dispatch wants to give you a tour.
Do you have to take cupcakes?
No. You can just go for, just to talk to them. I want to thank the county for a great meeting last night, and then, so today, Vice President Harris was in town, and I want to thank Wiseman Aviation because they really had to spring into action to make that happen. And I also want to thank everyone who was involved, I don't know who was involved in the past, with extending the runway at our airport, because it's because of that extended runway that Air Force Two can land in Flagstaff and we can have a visit from the Vice President. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in that. And city manager, I do not believe, has anything, so we are adjourned.